My name is Rich Mucci. I'm Chair of the Select Board. With me this evening are my colleagues, Vice Chair Anthea Brady, Members John Fallon, Michelle Pryor, Michael Bentecourt, and Town Manager Beth Rudolph. We have a pretty full agenda. I see we have a lot of people here, so we'll just jump right into it and hopefully move things along so everyone can go on with their night. First up, we have an acceptance of donations.
Move that we accept with gratitude donations of $2,000 from Gary and Sarah Gerati and $10,000 from the Friends of Winchester Recreation and Community Services, Inc. to the Recreation Department for the design, engineering, construction, supplies, equipment, and any expenses related to the outdoor sand volleyball courts.
All those in favor? Aye.
Move that we accept with gratitude an EEC stabilization grant of $17,966.67 for the Recreation Department Kid Connection Wrap, EEC Childcare License for the month of March.
All those in favor? Great. Thank you for those donations. We appreciate them. Beth, do you want to go through your report?
Sure. So first up, I have a few appointments and reappointments. In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter and Chapter 5 of the Town of Winchester Quota bylaws, I've made the following reappointments for a term to expire March 31st of 2025. Mary Ellen Lannan, Town Clerk, Anne Gill, Town Treasurer/Collector, and Matt Schuman, Town Engineer. So I'm very happy to continue working with those three department heads. Also, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I've made the following regular full-time promotional appointment in the Department of Public Works of Peter, I'm going to misprint it, Decubellus of Tewksbury to Water and Shore Distribution Supervisor. He's replacing Paul Ganji, who served the town for well over 30 years, 40 years. So big shoes to fill, but I think he is certainly up for the job. And I respectfully request that the Board vote to waive the customary 15-day appointment period.
Great. Is there a motion?
Move that we waive the 15-day appointment period to appoint Peter Decubellus to the Water and Sewer Distribution Supervisor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
And then finally, in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8D, I've made the following reappointments to the Historical Commission for a term to expire March 31st of 2027 of Jonathan Carlisle, Jack Leminege, and Michelle McCarthy. And then a few other updates for the Board on items not on your agenda this evening. So first up, we had a very successful first public forum for our Housing Production Plan Update on March 13th. I think we had maybe over 35 people there that attended. It was a good discussion, so we appreciate everybody joining us. We'll have another advisory group meeting scheduled in mid-April, and then there'll be another public forum that we're planning to have probably sometime in mid-May after a town meeting has ended. We met last week on the Economic Development Consultant. As I mentioned before, we had issued the RFP, and we had nine folks who responded to that. The selection committee met last week and interviewed three firms, and we expect to make a selection within the coming weeks. I think they were, all three were very good firms, so I think we'll be in good hands moving forward there. The annual town election is scheduled for tomorrow, March 26th, in the high school from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So just a reminder for everybody that school will be in session tomorrow, so it'll be a busy day parking-wise if you go during the time that school is in session. Other work that we have going on, where, as I've mentioned in the past few meetings, we're moving forth a design effort for the traffic calming project in the town center. We met with the Chamber of Commerce earlier this month. There'll be a table at the election tomorrow with our engineering team there to present the concept plans. We have a meeting scheduled with the downtown merchants and businesses, and we also have a meeting scheduled with our boards and committees on April 8th. So a few more steps in the process in terms of reviewing our concept plans, and then we'll be back to the Board with something closer to final design. And I think that's really all I had for now. Thank you.
Great. Any questions for Beth?
All right. Thank you, Beth. At this point, I'm going to open the meeting up for public comment. I will say there's a couple of public hearings tonight for two Eversource grants of location, one National Grid grant. If you're here for public comment on those public hearings, when I open the public hearings after the presentations, you'll have an opportunity to address those items. So at this time, if there's anyone else here who would wish to make a public comment on anything else, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you, come to the table, state your address, and you'll have up to three minutes to deliver your public comment. So with that being said, is there anyone else here for public comment?
Yes. So, Rich is locked tonight, everybody. As Chair of the Select Board, so I just want to thank Rich for his years of dedication. This is Rich's second full-time job. We're going to miss him, but we'll see him at town meeting. That'll be great. Thanks, Rich.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Great working with all of you, great working with the staff. I have mixed emotions about ending my political career, but it's been fun three years and look forward to the next chapter. So thanks, everyone, for all your help along the way and teaching me the ropes. And you're all in good hands with the remaining members, and tomorrow, get out and vote and see what happens. All right. With that being said, we'll move on to our first business item, and that's Committee and Commission Appointments and Reappointments. I'm going to do this backwards because I know there's people here to be interviewed. So I'm going to start with the Council on Aging Positions. I think I saw Cindy and Robert came here. So if you want to, I guess, come up, all of you at the same time, we can interview all of you.
All right.
How are you? So we've got information about all of you in our packets, but I'll give you each an opportunity to state, you know, who you are and why you're running these positions.
Aging before beauty. So I'm Cindy Boney. I live up on Berkshire Drive, been a resident in Winchester since 2006. And I continue to be amazed at the good work that happens at the Jenk Center. I think it's a real asset to the community. I have evolved through the schools and into alumni, and now I feel like I'm aging into Council on Aging. So I look forward to participating in their activities as well as supporting them, the Board, as they move forward with strategic planning. My commitment also in joining the Council on Aging is around supporting soon-to-be caretakers of the elderly. Me and my peers are, continue to look at how we can better support our parents in their retiring years. And so I'm just looking forward to joining the council.
Great.
My name is Decuan Tian. I've been living in Winchester for now is 14 years. So actually, almost every week I went to the Jenk Center because I have, my mother-in-law also liked this area. So especially in this town, there's so many Chinese, Guatemalan, Guatemalan property move here, right? I can speak both Chinese, English, so I just want to join this board as a bridge. So have diversity, have more communication with both the Chinese and also the Jenk Center. So my background, I have a medical background. I also, I was a doctor in China. Now I'm a financial advisor. So especially for the retirement, for the elderly people's care, I have a lot of expertise and experience on this one. So I want to contribute more of my time and all my energy to this committee.
Thank you. Robert?
My name is Robert Legbold, and Gloria and I have been in this town longer than any of you have been alive. We moved here first when I was in graduate school in the 1960s, and then we moved permanently here in 1971. And we've been in the same home through that period of time. Our son and daughter went through the schools from that period, and our, three of our oldest grandchildren went through the schools. They're all now out of it. My career has been as an academic. I taught at Columbia University for 30 years, and over those 30 years, I commuted between Winchester and New York, which provided me an excuse for not having been active within the city during that period of time. But my wife has, over those years, always been very active, and therefore, I've understood through these years the character of the city and how it's changed, what its challenges are vicariously. That's not a good excuse. But at this point, when Tom Holly approached me and we talked about this, I said, "Well, Tom, knowing all of what you've done for this town, there's no way that I can say no to you to now making a contribution along the way." And if there is a contribution in the absence of my direct participation much of it, it may be my experience on boards, because I've served on many boards over the years and worked with organizations, a sense how a board and an organization operates. I served for 10 years on the Board of Trustees at Tufts University and a number of others. And at Columbia, I ran an institute that had a board, so I had a sense of how a director of an institute works with a board. My own view is boards are boards, and the way in which they work with organizations, in this case, the Jenk Center and the other relevant organizations, I think may be of some utility. And the final thing I would say is I think I will end up being, from what I know of the council at this point, the oldest member on the council. And since I've seen Winchester through the years, I'll now bring to it what an octogenarian thinks about this city and the Council on Aging. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions by any Board members for our candidates? I'll just say thank you all for your willingness to serve the town. You know, we're run by volunteers, and we appreciate your willingness to step forward in this role. So with that, I think we need to take a vote individually, even though I brought them up as a group.
Motion to appoint Cindy Boney to the Council on Aging for the term to expire March 31st, 2027.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Robert Legbold to the Council on Aging for the term to expire March 31st, 2027.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Decuan Tian to the Council on Aging for the term to expire March 31st, 2027.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. It's unanimous. So thank you all for your willingness to serve. Good luck.
Thanks for applying.
Is Patrick Campbell here? Come on up, Patrick. So Patrick, you're applying to be on the Commissioner of Trust Funds?
Yes.
And why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself?
Sure. I have not been in Winchester as long as everyone else. My family and I moved four years ago, like a lot of people, during the middle of pandemic. And I have three young kids, five years old, three years old, and one years old, so in the thick of it. So far, we've been in town for the last four years. We love the town. We hope to be here for the long run. That's one of the reasons I want to get involved in the town. And so my background is, I've always been in the investment management industry in Boston. I worked at Eaton Vance, which is a pretty well-known Boston firm. Since, got bought by Morgan Stanley. Still same sort of general group and firm. And so I've been there for 16 years, ever since I graduated from undergrad at Boston College. And I think, you know, even though I've been, you know, only 16 years in the industry, I think I have a wealth of experience. I've managed a number of different strategies, different funds, have a lot of experience in various asset classes. I connected with Bob, who used to work at Eaton Vance years and years ago, back in the day, and he told me sort of what a wonderful organization the Trust Commission is and the organizations it serves. And, you know, the thing that caught my eye the most was just the involvement in the library. And, you know, we live at Crescent Road right around the corner, and we pretty much go every day to the library and hope to continue to go for a long, long time and just, you know, want to support the community as any way I can. So I hope, this is my first meeting, but I hope it's not my last meeting by any means.
Thank you. Any questions for Patrick? I'll just reiterate, thank you for your willingness to serve. We appreciate your willingness to jump in. As a, you know, newer resident of the town, it's great to get your perspective. And, you know, certainly with your experience, you know, in a position like this, it'd be very well, serve the committee very well. So thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to appoint Patrick Campbell to the Commissioners' Trust Fund for the term to expire March 31st, 2027.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. It's unanimous. Thank you, Patrick, for coming in. Good luck. Thank you. I probably have 30 seconds before I'll start the public hearings. We'll do the Committee on Names. There's one incumbent, Sandra Thompson. Any discussion about reappointing Sandra Thompson to the Committee on Names? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Motion to appoint Sandra Thompson to the Committee on Names for the term to expire March 31st, 2025.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll s-
Two reappointments and a supplemental.
I was so focused on the new ones, I forgot to add the other two.
Let's have she under here. Okay. On Council of Aging, we have two incumbents for reappointment, Meredith Allen and Jennifer Wilson, for terms to expire March 31st, 20-
Is that right? 2024? This month?
No.
No, it's 2027.
2027.
Anthony will read it right.
Any discussion on that? All right, great. You sure?
Motion to appoint Meredith Allen to the Council on Aging for the term to expire March 31st, 2027.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Jennifer Wilson to the Council on Aging for the term to expire March 31st, 2027.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, we're going to pause on our business agenda for a second and go, because it is 7:45, to our public hearings. So the first public hearing is an Eversource grant location from Pond Street for the installation of an eight-foot conduit within the public right-of-way to serve Lynch School. Who's here from Eversource? Oh. Okay. Do we expect her?
I would say she would be here by now if she was coming.
Okay. Hi, Matt. Our newly reappointed Town Engineer. Step in. All right, what can you tell us about this?
So I certainly won't represent what the grant of location is for Eversource. However, it is in support of a town project. It's to provide service to the Lynch School that's undergoing construction. They're tying in with the plans for the site, and I don't have any other comments regarding it.
Staff has reviewed it and everyone's okay with it? Any questions from Matt or discussion by any Board members on this one? Yeah, okay. Just have to ask, John. All right, is there a motion? Oh, wait, excuse me. Before there's a motion, is there anyone from the public here to make comment on the Eversource grant of location on Pond Street for the Lynch School? Okay. Seeing no one, I'll close public comment of this portion of the public hearing. And now we can take a motion.
Motion to approve the Eversource grant of location for Pond Street for the installation of eight feet of conduit within the public right-of-way to serve Lynch School.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that passes. All right, our next Eversource grant of location is the Mount Vernon Street Jenk slot for the installation of 116 feet of conduit within the public right-of-way to serve the proposed electrical vehicle charging station in the Jenk's parking lot. And I did, I saw Ken Pruitt walk in. Hi, Ken. Do you want to come on up?
I just walked out for a second.
There he is. How are you?
Doing well. How are you?
Good. Do you have any other information either of you to offer on this grant of location?
No, same thing. This is to support a town project to install the electrical charging stations at the Jenk Center parking lot. It is running from a manhole in Mount Vernon Street at Skilling's Road, down Skilling's Road and then into the parking lot where it will be in, mostly the equipment will be in the grass area.
So it won't be disruption above surface?
I mean, there's some equipment that's associated with the charging station that will be above ground, but there won't be anything, I mean, they have to dig it, but there won't be anything above ground after, when they're not.
Did they trench the road or not?
They do have to trench.
And so we're also going to time this around the fair, right? Like, I don't want to trench in the middle of the fair, right?
It's a whole new ride.
Is that, is that what we're, is that the condition?
We certainly, yeah, we can make that a condition.
Yeah.
For sure. And Eversource is going to, you know, their contractor is going to want to do the work when they have an opening, but we can specify limits.
Yeah, and certainly that can be specified through the street opening permit that they get through. get through DPW and we can coordinate with them.
Yeah, so I'd make it, you know, after, either, well, April or, not in May. Let's put it that way.
Sure.
For the fair. So, make sure that everything's okay for the fair.
Good idea.
So, we know how long they'll be tearing up Skilling's? Like, how many days was the duration?
I did not ask them. This is not a very large project. A hundred and sixteen feet should be, you know, in the matter of days or a week, I would think. And the biggest thing will be, you know, there'll have to be some traffic control and we'll work with the police department on some conditions for that, which might make it take a little bit longer. Make sure they're not starting during school hours and whatnot or-
You could go, uh, restriction on work hours to start after eight-thirty if you wanted to do that. We can do that through the street opening permit as well.
Yeah, let's do that. And then also, I guess, Town Day is June first. So, we don't want it dug up from June first either, because I think Town Day stretches down that way as well. So-
And there's a race.
And there's a race. We don't want to trip either. I will not be running the race, but for the honors. So, it comes to-
Yeah, I mean, are we really looking at after Town Day? Because I'm thinking even if, I guess it would be done by then, but Town Day's June.
So, can we restrict this to after June first?
Yeah.
What are we doing? What's the schedule?
Our street opening, street opening permit's open April fifteenth, so they could, you know, there's probably a month prior to Town Day that they could start if-
Well, not with the fair.
The fair is on-
I mean, sorry, not Town Day. Um, what, what weekend is the fair?
The seventeenth.
Okay.
So, I'd want it done either the, for last two weeks of April or they have to wait till June.
Yeah.
After June first.
After June.
After school gets out. You just wait until the school gets out?
Yeah, that would be even better.
Let's keep going, right?
Would be ideal.
Until the school gets out.
I mean, it's just a busy intersection. Uh, we've got a lot of events, you know, in that timeframe, so. All right, so if we can condition it on that, that would be great.
Work hours after the first of June. Any other conditions?
Well, if you will-
Well, April, if they can do it in April, that's school vacation week, so.
Oh, they can do it that week, yes. Otherwise, okay.
I don't know if they'll be able to. And then how long after, Ken, since you're sitting here, how long after that, uh, do we get the charging stations up and running?
Well, we're getting very close to signing a contract to actually purchase the charging stations, in which case then they'll just be waiting to be sent to us until the make-ready work is, is done, you know, putting in the, the concrete slab and the, um, the wiring. So, it's just gonna be as fast as Eversource can do its work and then, once that work is done, you know, it, as fast as it can be shipped to us, um, from the manufacturer. And then I think it's like a day or two to bolt it down and wire it up. Um, so hopefully, and that, all of that work should be out of the way of the public, except for a few parking spaces in the Jenks Lot.
Great. Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Public comment?
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Uh, is there anyone here for public comment on the Eversource grant location on Mount Vernon Street Jenks Lot? All right, seeing no one, uh, close public comment.
Uh, motion to approve the Eversource grant of location for Mount Vernon Street Jenks Lot for the installation of a hundred and sixteen feet of conduit within the public right-of-way to serve the proposed electric vehicle charging stations in the Jenks Pot, Jenks Parking Lot. Um, conditional on, um, the timeframes and, uh, the start work times as discussed by the board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
One opposed. Great. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, uh, our third public hearing is National Grid Grant Location for Cross Street. Is anyone here from National Grid? Come on up if you're here from National Grid.
Hi. My name's Diana Cuddy. I'm from National Grid Gas, one-seventy Data Drive, Walton, Massachusetts. This is my colleague, Bob Kilgus, that's here to answer any questions regarding, um-
I think we're just gonna pull your presentation up.
Okay.
And just show it on the big screen if you'd like.
I think I am. So, I've got both.
So, when you go through your presentation tonight, I know a lot of folks are interested in understanding how, what was the selection criteria?
Siting process.
You know, that we had four locations. How'd you decide those four locations? And then why is this the best location, especially given the area's propensity to flood?
Mm-hmm.
And then what were the ramifications if, if the vault does get flooded? So, it's those kinds of things would be really important to understand for people who are watching, the people in the audience, because-
We've had that question real wide.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Yeah. So, um, basically, we have an existing regulator station in Winchester and we were not able to reuse that same location. So, there was a citing process of four other locations that were looked at and for various reasons, um, based on our design criteria as well as other conditions in the, um, in the, the area. This was, this location on ninety-five Cross Street was deemed the most acceptable.
So, does it, so, is your current place, you, you're not allowed to be, do you not have an easement for that? Did the, is the easement over or does it not, does it not support the regulator you want to put in? And so, I think some of this is what we need to understand.
I can, I can jump on this.
Yeah. Okay.
So, so we have, um, we run our citing through operations engineering, right? They're the, they're the team that has the gas map, right, that, what mains you need to go into successfully feed the system and whatnot, right? Largely based on size and where the most flow and demand is and whatnot. So, they give us little radiuses on where it can go. Um, the existing location is-
So, is the regulator, does this keep the, the pressure constant?
Correct.
Is that sort of the idea of it? Okay.
Correct. I, I can get into that next.
Yeah, no, no, I don't want to get in the weeds too much, but just-
Yeah, no, it's, it's good. I don't, I don't mind. Some, I'm an engineer.
He likes it.
So, PSI is about the way I'm sorry.
So-
How much time you got?
Um, we, we had a couple of, um, um, locations selected. Um, we worked with the town. Um, one was in a residential neighborhood. Honestly, worked really well pressures-wise and for what we were trying to do, but they didn't want it in front of houses, um, just for aesthetics and whatnot. Um, the existing location is a bit of a struggle because there's, the main's not big enough, and then there's the Eversource, um, line in there and the street's pretty-
Yeah.
-full.
Yes, it is.
Um, so, that kind of steered us away from there. And then the, the low, um, power lines make it very difficult to get the new vault in, because we have to get it in, um, forklifts or cranes, but it's a pretty big structure. It's all below grade, but it's, it's relatively large. Um, and then we walked the site with the town last summer, last fall, and this was deemed, uh, a better location. Went back to our operations engineering team. They, it works on their model. Um, so we just, we started working the design around that area.
So, when you look at the flood map, though, is flooding an issue, even though we have a great mitigation strategy here in town?
Yeah. Um, I mean, it's not ideal if the regulator vault was full of water every day. Um, but they are designed with vent poles that are four to five feet tall. Um, and they, that is the atmospheric reference for the, uh, regulators themselves. Um, so the, the reg station will function a hundred percent, um, normally, even if fully submerged in water, until the water gets to above the vent poles. Um, so, it's not a concern. It's more of a corrosion concern long-term. Um, but we have vaults, say, in Winthrop that are full of water every day, because the, the tide is in them.
Right.
So, it's not a, it's not a, uh, functional concern. They test those, those vent lines, they call them, they're the atmospheric reference for the pilots and the regs, um, every, annually. It's part of their annual inspection, so.
So, is that what we see in the picture? There's a picture of a vault-
Yes, probably.
-of three or four pipes there? Yeah, okay.
She's just trying to get the big TV working.
Okay.
You can scroll forward though, because it'll, I mean-
While we're-
The board may be able to see it on the little monitor, but-
While we, wait. If you, if they want to work on that, I can give some of the, so, I get, part of the, um, correct, the reg station was chosen, um, based on, uh, asset scoring, right? So, there's a risk score that they come out with, um, and they have a, it's a complex equation. I won't go into that, but largely the state has, uh, their current standard is three layers of protection. Okay? So, a current reg station has a control and a monitor regulator in it, and if the control fails, the monitor takes over. Um, so, the new, since Merrimack Valley, the state came out and said, "You need three." So, now the new station has a control reg, a monitor reg, and a super monitor reg. Um, and they, basically, two can fail and every, like outright fail. Um, and no system, we, customer would never even know.
You guys are notified, though, if they fails?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, and then we also have two runs in that. So, if a reg, if the runs fail close, we still are, it's reliability as well. Doesn't increase capacity, um, but it does increase the reliability. Um, as far as, um, notifications, the, the stainless traffic boxes that are in the pictures and in the design, those are live connected to North Row. They send a signal every thirty seconds. Um, and they have different level alarms set under the pressures and as soon as a vault would trip out of control and go to monitor, right, they know. Big red light on the screen, INR is out there within an hour.
What kind of maintenance is required? I know, I read in the right of the periodic maintenance and so-
Yeah.
That's a very congested area if there's a lot of activity there. So, is there two hours?
The only big one, yeah, the only big one's the annual inspection. Um, up to a day. It's probably more like half a day. That's where they go through. They check every reg for lockup and they go through a whole process. They check the vent lines and whatnot, right? They, and corrosion. It's the whole list that they go through. Um, and then it would be pressure sets, um, not common, because in our SCADA cabinets, we actually have, uh, remote controls. So, gas control will be able to raise and lower the pressures.
Want to explain what a SCADA cabinet is for those who don't know?
Oh, what does it actually stand for? Um-
S-C-A-D-A, I guess, but- Don't worry about it. What's, what's it do?
All right, yeah. So, basically what it does is north, their gas control center can monitor the reg station pressures live. Um, inlet pressure, outlet pressure. Um, they have alarms all set up for various different scenarios. And then we have what we call a kick cell in the SCADA cabinet, um, which allows them to raise pressures on high-demand days and, and lower the pressure through the summer, for example. Um, and from, all from North Row. So.
So, bottom line, there's a lot of safety controls-
Yeah.
-in there, in there.
Yeah.
Designed to fail off, so the place doesn't blow up. True?
Yes, yes.
All right.
Um, and, and then, too, the, the biggest concern is sense lines, right? So, they're, like, with the current station location, the sense lines, every, this is what it was, you know, how they put them in, they went to mains. The new station, there's, all the sense lines are connected within a foot of the vault. So, any work in the street, more or less, the risk of hitting a sense line is almost-
It's eliminated.
It's, it's, it's eliminated.
Thank you.
So.
It would take about a month, it looks like, to install this?
So, I like to say six weeks for the install, but then, uh, to full honesty, the, the restoration, like, they'll, they'll get it in, they'll get the piping, they'll get it running, and then they'll have to come back and do the final restoration on the sidewalk and put, drop the curbing and all that. So, like, the, but they usually demo. Like, the street will be patched and, and whatnot, but for them to actually do the full restoration, um, they usually do it in multiple mobilizations, if that makes sense.
Are you aware what's been going on on Cross Street for the last two and a half, three years?
Yeah, yeah. The Eversource-
Friends from Eversource in the back row over there, waving their hands?
Um-
They're, they're about done and they're gonna be starting their restoration work in the spring, guys? Is that, so how would this all coordinate together with them fixing our road and you tearing it up?
Well, we're coordinating between National Grid, Eversource, and DPW, and that's kind of what, one of the reasons why we're here now is to try and get this done before all of the restoration's complete. When, when that, uh, Eversource is working with DPW on a very long list of things to do, so it's not like the first activity is to pave the whole street. They have sidewalks repaired, some curbing to install, um, patches that they have to redo. So, the hope is to have this done before all of the paving is complete.
And we are working with the town, too, with the new sidewalk layout that you wanted, right?
Yeah, we're also looking at how to improve the sidewalk in that area. So, we're coordinating on that as well.
So, that is something we'll, our, our, we're getting the plans and we're gonna shift the curbing out for the town. When we do our restoration, we're pulling the curbing out anyway. So, if, if he wants us to put it four feet one way or another, that's, that's the plan. So, um, the restoration, we're working with them with that.
And how, what would be, when we're, when we're installing this, what would be the traffic and pedestrian access in the area and for businesses?
We do have a TNP, right?
Yeah.
Martin sent that out?
Yep.
Um, generally, uh-
It's not gonna show.
No, it's not gonna show.
It's too late.
So, um, it's a single lane closure for when we go to do our, go across the street, right? So, the inlet and outlet tie-ins for the reg station are across the street. So, when they do that tie-in, which is gonna be less than a week, they would need to close that side. Um, and then a single lane on this side, when, the week that they dropped the vault in, um, and, and obviously get the pipe across. But generally, they, they won't be closing the full road. It'll be a single lane closure. Um, and then we have a TNP here draft, um, and it shows on, when the, at night, we can maintain the sidewalk around our excavation, because there is a good breakdown lane there currently. Um, but then I think during, um, construction, there's a, there's a crosswalk and we'd have to send them across the street.
Would the lane be closed at night as well or?
No, they, they would be plated. No, they're just during, I think, would you say nine, nine o'clock start?
Yeah, so just for additional, um, background, uh, in the memo that the engineering department put together and kind of based on some of the lessons learned with other utility companies, we put together a lot of suggested conditions. And one was to, um, put together, have them put together a traffic management plan for the town to review and approve. And some of the conditions would be, uh, a nine AM start, uh, having police details there during the day to assist people walking through the area, because the crosswalk is, you know, a little bit further away. Having it, the road open at the end of the day, having the sidewalk passable or a sidewalk detour, uh, that's actually passable with adequate signage, um, at the end of the day to help people at night. Um, and again, these are a lot of issues that came up during work by another utility that, you know, we've, when we met with them, I think last week, we brought up, and I think that the staff would be monitoring pretty closely to make sure that they're meeting those conditions.
Another one would be parking for the job?
Yes, that was us.
You can, you can rent from the soccer, uh, place. The guys from Eversource can give you the contact over there, I'm sure. And you can rent parking spaces from them for your crews, but they can't be in the street parked. They can't be up on a sidewalk, so people can't pass.
Okay.
That's a, that's a heavily traveled route for school kids, um, and kids that go to the soccer field, the Leonard Field, Leonard Field to the other way, to Planet Fitness, uh, wherever they go. Uh, it's heavily traveled. And so, we can't have vehicles parked on the street if you were to do this work.
So, that would have a, uh, communication plan with all the neighbors or with whatever radius, if that's a quarter mile or something like that?
Yeah, and the tough part with that neighborhood is there's not a lot of immediate, there's, there's businesses there, but there's not a lot of immediate residential neighbors. But there's a bunch of, uh, sort of a, you go at north from it, I guess, there's a number of people who are using that cross rock, um, regularly. Uh, the bike path right there goes directly to the school, so getting their kids to school and back, or just people who are, um, using the path. So, uh, I think, uh, communication would want to go beyond sort of the butters on that street.
The direct the butters, okay.
Yeah.
What's the noise we're looking at? What's the noise we're looking at?
Uh, not, I'm assuming like end result noise?
No, just in general for construct, I mean, this neighborhood.
For the construction, construction's gonna be a backhoe, dump truck. Um, hopefully we don't have to break out a hammer, that hopefully there's no ledge in the area. But, um, so I would say, I don't know how to say standard construction noise, but it's not, it's not anything drastic.
How deep is the pit?
So, um, six feet, the vault itself, yeah, the vault, the concrete vault structure is six feet deep, yeah.
Have you done testing, like, what if you hit water, I mean, it's not gonna hit six feet, water at six feet, right, this area?
Well, I assume you'll do water if you.
Correct.
Have to, yeah. And you have to go to comm, comm, still, right?
We do, yeah, correct, correct.
So, another condition would be that they get an order of conditions from the conservation commission, and they also need an ATM permit from MWRA, which is basically a permit you need when you work close to MWRA infrastructure, there is MWRA sewer in the area that they would be working close to.
Have you talked to MWRA about this concept?
Yeah, so we're not actually crossing their lines, so, um, they told us a seven day turnaround. Um, as long as we're seven feet or eight feet, whatever our distance is from them.
So Matt, alright, remember your, my video, so I'm gonna ask this question. After this, what else could possibly go on in that street? Like in the next five years, not like next year.
I hope we're done, I, Bob is here, I don't think there are any.
Sewer, Bob, anything happened over there?
National Grid is doing gas, um, connection from Loring onto Cross Street, they're doing it now, so they should be done in the next couple of weeks. Other than that, some improvements that help home street for traffic, and, uh, the improvements at Forest for traffic.
And as they alluded to, you know, we are looking at some improvements at the Cross and Forest intersection to hopefully tie in with the Eversource work or through some of the restoration monies, but we're not far enough along to really present a plan tonight or anything for, for folks to look at.
Or a little more tunneling, or excavation? Getting power poles going in there, anything that's cool like that, nothing, right, okay, good.
So just to, to comment on that intersection, um, I think a lot of the concerns and the concerns that we've heard stem from the work that's been happening, um, from, from the, the three forty-five kilovolt line. Um, it's also, uh, I mentioned, a lot of people are using that and using that with their kids. And that intersection, while there's a flashing beacon, a little bit farther down to connect the, the bike path. Um, the, the sightlines are very quirky as you come out of the path there, and so both feeling like cars don't necessarily still register that intersection, and it gets kind of weird with the, um, the in and out of the soccer field. Um, the, the forest crossing there also, um, 'cause I live over on, in that neighborhood and I use the bike path, and the, part of the, the challenge with Cross Street is that the, the crossing on Forest Street, um, feels very unsafe. Um, so, a, a lot of the, the comments and the feedback are sort of compounded on the concerns about that. Safety of that intersection and sort of the, the repeated, um, challenges with previous work, so I think like improvements to the sidewalk are helpful there, but, you know, the sidewalk in that stretch kind of exists, but as you go towards Washington Street on Cross Street, you lose sidewalk, you have, um, trucks that are parking sort of on the road, on the, on, on the sidewalk, whatever it may be, so there's also like even fixing that part, there's a continuity where we, there's not good, um, sort of walking on that side. So I don't know if stuff is coming on, on Forest and Cross, but if there are additional considerations around the, the like, as we're digging into the sidewalk, the safety of that intersection, especially if, um, you know, you mentioned it'll be accessed at least once a year, um, is it gonna be accessed more than that, are we, you know, we're gonna have to deal with some of the things that there's, you know, your work, and then there's subcontractors or subcontractors of subcontractors who aren't necessarily following the restrictions that the town has set up, because they're not hearing it directly, so, um, that neighborhood is just a little bit.
Good point, maybe you could talk about, um, who is doing the work, because, um, the other utility had multiple subcontractors and that caused a lot of the issues.
Um, so, I hope I'm not, I'm ninety percent confidence interval, this one is midway. Um, and they are I don't even know if they use subcontractors maybe for concrete work, but they, the same guy that's in the backhoe can weld, right? So they're a, um, they're a, a unit, they work directly for us, they have their own equipment, they have their own welders. Um, all their guys are OQ'd through us, they all have all of our safety, um, guidelines, they've passed all their tests. Um, their ISN net squ- uh, score is, I think it's B, B or better, I think is National Grid's policy. Um, I could be off on a few details, right, but they've gone through it all, this, this is largely what they do for us. Um, they do probably ten of these a year, I wanna say, they I truly, they're my favorite contractor to work with, so if, if you have issues, if you talk to them, they will work with you. Access, keeping access open, they, they do, they do these in Boston, right? So they're very familiar with super tight, super strict permit hours, um, and and restoration efforts and all that, so I think as long as we tell them what we want and we're clear, we shouldn't have any issues.
Are you gonna be the project manager on this?
Um, no, that's Andrew Door. But largely the engineers kinda.
I just want someone, if this does go forward, that the residents can contact.
Yeah, Andrew Door, he's not here.
Right, and they also, before they start the project, they send out the abutter list, which we can widen the scope of that to the geographical area. And on the, on that is a contact person, usually the supervisor from National Grid, but the supervisor from Midway would also be on site. Um, and then you can always give me a call if, if it's a problem, and I can reach out to Andrew or anybody, but yeah, the residents will have a flyer before the construction starts that will have contact information on it. And kind of just a little description of what to expect in regards to parking and whatever.
Yeah, I, I just, I think Matt can also articulate some of the direct concerns around, um, parking, especially if it's happening during the school year. That, that timeframes are, are not, the, they're set that way for a reason, because there are kids crossing the street before eight thirty in the morning, and that at eight thirty AM start time doesn't mean that trucks are in the roadway and restricting passage for kids who are riding their bikes to school.
So, yeah, I, I think we, we heard from some residents before we saw all the details in your presentation, I have to admit, I thought it was a joke that there was actually gonna be more construction on Cross Street at that intersection, like, I truly thought it was like an early April Fool's joke. There's, well, you've heard, I mean, you, you've seen, there's so much going on, so I'm trying to understand, the final result, there's actual posts in the sidewalk on Cross Street that will be.
That's just a random, that's not, that's just a, what it, what, like.
But our, what, so if we're gonna widen the sidewalks, do we actually, where if we put this, we have these posts in the sidewalk?
They're gen- so the, on Cross Street, they're off the they're behind, they're, so. It's in, within, so we actually had the right of way staked out, um.
Sidewalk's gonna move out into the road farther, it's not going back in the same spot.
We have room to get the vent posts off the back.
Yeah, so that was one comment that came up, um, and somebody, the abutters certainly made comments, was concerned, like, obviously this is a grant location to be in the town right of way, we wanna make sure everything's installed in ti- town right of way. So, National Grid has already gone out and, uh, done a property line survey in that area to confirm that they can put all of their equipment underground and above ground in the right of way, and not on private property, not on town, other town property that's not in the, the layout, and that's something that I suggested as a condition, ongoing. Um, just to con- confirm that it's in the layout.
And maybe this is, this is Matt and, and, and Grid, can you explain, or maybe a little more detail of how the there, there were no other acceptable sites?
There was one, it was a neighborhood.
And, we can't do this in a neighborhood?
We were, well, we were targeting, um, well, commercial areas, um, to not have this in front of somebody's house.
And the this are these three poles and this thing on the road?
Yeah, the diamond plate in the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Okay.
Was the other location in the residential area subject to flooding?
Uh, Loring Ave, I wa- I would say no.
So the, alternate location was on Loring?
Yeah.
So, I, I guess I'm, I'd need to see that location, I'm just, then that this might be the optimal location, but it might not be.
Yeah, um, we, we had a full survey, full plan done last summer, hoping to go into this process. And we, uh, we didn't get there, so. We were, we were, the, the location did not work for, um.
The location on Loring Ave?
I think there were some concerns with the staff about placing this large regulator station in a very densely populated residential neighborhood, because.
Twenty, twenty-five feet of the front of the house. Uh, you know, it wasn't the best place to put one.
If you, there, the one that exists today is, um, right at Conant Road, where the Willows is, you can see kind of what it looks like, right, there's a large plate in the sidewalk, and I think maybe there's like a standpipe or something, that's, yeah. So I think, you know, the staff's concern, which is understandable, is that to put this large piece of infrastructure in, in a very densely populated residential neighborhood, if there made sense to explore alternatives, right, and the Cross Street area, although there are residences, it's not the, the, the location where it's going is not directly in front of any residential property.
It was a safe thing versus a flood issue, like, if you had to rack one over the other, you said, we'd rather have the thing get flooded than have some kind of incident in a neighborhood, I'm just asking, I think that's, that's a good answer.
I think the, the flooding piece, if they didn't think the structure, they, they know the fluctu- the structure's gonna get flooded, right? Whether it gets flooded five times a year, once every five years, whoever, it's gonna get, there's no doubt it's gonna get flooded at some point. Um, and they've made the determination that, from their infrastructure standpoint, that is reasonable, I mean, I think you said you have other, other structures that, that flood daily, right?
It's just that we didn't see the locations, so, this is what we're given, and I know, resident, other residents have asked, where were these other locations? And how do we end up here, so that's, that's.
And this is pretty common with the grant location process, right, there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes with staff to work with the utilities to figure out what the layouts might look like.
I think you answered, yep, that's, I think that's an answer to the question, I, I think, I don't necessarily I get that the vault can deal with flooding, and I'm not as concerned about the flooding, I think it's more about the disruption, I forget about the disruption on Cross Street now, but the annual you know, survey and audit, whatever, the checking, it, it's at the corner of Cross and Fort, like, it couldn't be in a worse place if we hadn't torn up Cross Street for the last two years.
But I don't think it's that bad, because they can park in the, the soccer place, can walk over and do the testing.
Right, it's one truck for the inspections.
The annual is just a truck, yeah, it's not, it's not, it's just a truck, a two man, two or three man crew.
Cones up and the guys down there and.
And not in the street, they'd be working, looking in the sidewalk, at that point.
Don't have the trucks parked in the sidewalk, alright, just relax.
So, we've heard a lot, I'm gonna open it up to the public at this point, uh, to hear, for public comment, so if you're here to make public comment, I'd ask you, on this grant location, I'd ask you to raise your hand, I'll recognize you, come on up, have a seat, state your name and your address, and you'll have up to three minutes to deliver your public comment. So, is anyone here for public comment? Laura?
Hi, thank you, I'm Laura Conti, I live at Four Highland View Ave, I actually live across from the existing uh, unit, so I know what it looks like, I've seen the guys in their trucks there. Um, you might think, why am I here if I were moving it away from where I live, but, um, it's not about that for me. Um, so, I wanted, you mentioned there were three other locations. Yeah, but you've only talked about one residential on Loring, so where was the third?
That and the existing.
Well, the present, well, okay.
Yeah, so.
It was, the presentation made it seem like there was yet another, so there was.
The current lo- we could take, pull out the car and put it back, Loring Ave, and then the.
And you said, the current location is not good because the street's full and the three forty-five line is there. The same is, is the same not true down at Cross Street, at, at, uh, Forest? 'Cause that line goes the whole way down.
Where we show our tie-ins, if you wanna pull the plan out.
The three forty-five is on the other side of the street, so think about where the big hole was this summer at the vet.
Yeah, and where, and where we tie in is where they started their HDD, so it's, they're very deep. So they're actually below our lines, let me see here.
That's where they did the tunneling, that the jerk tunnel.
And how much?
So, okay.
So you're gonna tunnel above their lines, so what are the cha-
The, the, three forty-five line is on the other side of the street.
I understand.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're tying in on that side of the street, so.
But, but the regulator pit is on the opposite, yeah, I mean, it's, yeah.
So, the, the Eversource line is right down here, and where we are showing the tie-in here, it's ten feet deep, is that? Deeper than that, so, whereas it comes, but, it comes up, that's where they go blow the tracks and it comes back up. So it's out of our way here.
So, because you're saying at Conant Road, it's on the other side of the street, so that's why it's too close?
It's, it's, it's not fourteen feet deep.
Okay, so, um.
And also, just, I think, you, you have to keep the existing station operational while you put the new station in, correct?
We can, we can, we have a shutdown window, which we can do that, yeah.
Okay, um, some other questions are, the one that you're putting in, so it's bigger, right? Are there other ones?
It's.
Are there other ones like this, other places, that, like, the one that you're proposing to put in?
This is what we put in everywhere.
Okay. And presumably you have communications to residents, abutters, when you put those in, right?
Yeah.
So in your presentation, you showed something from twenty twenty about a gas mainline. So why, why aren't we seeing what you're actually gonna be sending to abutters? Um, for this particular project in a more recent than four years ago communication, like this, this whole presentation was very light on details, and it just makes me nervous as someone who's witnessed all we did in the past three years with lack of communication, la- lack of details, plans changing over and over and over again. Um, and I'm wondering to, um, it seems like this location is there are a lot of contingencies, there are a lot of hoops, there are a lot of potential problems. Why can't we find another location that doesn't have all these issues with, um, traffic, parking, floodplain? Is, is the, is the concern for the residential neighborhood aesthetics, or is it safety, that's what I would also like to know?
Extremely biased opinion, but I, I would say, these are safe, or we wouldn't be putting them in the public right of way.
Okay, so the residential issue is aesthetics. I think we should all be clear, if the issue of putting it in residential is aesthetics, and weigh that against all these other hoops that we're jumping through.
I would just chime in, and, and I have to admit, I wasn't, you know, I started last June, so I wasn't involved in a lot of the initial things, but I think it's not just safety in terms of, you know, if something goes wrong, but there's the amount of time that it takes to install, it's the location, you know, the lo- location I saw was Loring at Kirk, which is closer to the park. It's, it's just as, um, narrow street, so parking is still an issue, I, I think the sense from staff was like you have all the same, or, you know, you might not have the floodplain, but you have a lot of the similar issues in that location, plus you have a tighter sidewalk. Plus you're closer to residences, so, I mean, the closer to residences is potentially an aesthetic thing. But I think you have all the other issues as part of construction, um, at the other locations, and I think that's what drove, um, staff to push National Grid to look at other locations on Cross Street.
Can I just ask you, what do you, what do you do with the station up at, um, by the Willows, it's by Conestry, are you, do you decommission that, do you take it out?
Yeah, so they decommission it, um, and then they cut the, basically the inlet and outlet that go out into the main. They cut them off at the main, then they pull the structures out.
How long does that take?
Not long.
And what's the, and then what do you have to, is it in the sidewalk, do you need to restore the sidewalk?
My last question is, um, this Eversource three forty-five line, to my knowledge, is the only one like it in New England, maybe beyond, in a residential neighborhood, so my guess is that there aren't any of these stations in close proximity to this highly charged electrical line. And could there be any safety issues that we don't know about, because there aren't any applications of this line in, in use?
I think that's a good question, so, have you, has, has National Grid and Eversource communicated about these two pieces of equipment within proximity of each other?
Generally, um, the concern from gas piping is cathodic protection, right? So, the cathodic protection on, we use anodes, uh, zinc anodes that are self-sacrificing, right, to keep our, they, they corrode instead of the piping. Um, and if you get stray voltage, right, from, say, an electric line, so say you're touching an electric conduit or something, right, that then will short-circuit your cathodic protection. Um, but our CP crews would, um, if, if something like that were to occur, you would instantly know. 'Cause they test every three months, the piping.
But you gotta, I guess, you initially said you gotta come across the street to the regulator, so you gotta dig, they're, they've Eversource is below you, with their boring's, what they did on, tunnel underneath the river. So, I mean, has there been any discussions with Eversource about you digging above it, and what could potentially happen? Because the last thing I want is pipes hit, fluid leaking, you know?
Um, no, I guess would be the answer, I, we have not worked directly with them on, on the effects of their lines on our, I guess.
So I think before we, in my mind, I don't hear from everyone else, you gotta have those. you gotta have those conversations before I say yes to anything in this area. That's just me personally. But it's my last night here, so someone else might feel differently. But, I mean, I don't know how you do this project, understanding the magnitude of what just went on there and what infrastructure is in there without... You two need to talk to... You're both here tonight. You guys can talk, but it's...
I mean...
We have existing pipes.
We have our existing pipes in the road right now. So I'm not the distribution. I do reg stations only, so I'm not the distribution guy. And I hate to say and make the assumption that they talked to each other about the existing piping that they're next to, because we're only tying into existing piping.
Yeah.
We're not... The only piping that we're putting in that's new is actually the 30 feet that goes across the street. So the existing piping that runs in parallel with EverSource's electric line, I have no comment, because I was not part of it.
They do have design criteria. They have to be so many feet away from all different kinds of things, I know.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Can we approve with the condition that they connect with EverSource and bring back, you know, a plan or at least confirmation? I mean, my concern, we haven't heard from other residents, but we, you know, we wanna get Cross Street back into shape, and this seems to be a strategy, right, coming from our DPW to get things done and get the, you know, streets? So I don't wanna delay things if we're gonna... If this is the only option, right? So that's my only concern.
I mean, can...
We can. We can do whatever. We can put conditions on any of these, so...
Street opening is April 15th, and so we could have us come back to us before then.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you.
All right, who else is here?
Someone else in the neighborhood wanted to know why this wasn't done, like, talked about and done when the streets were already open. That's another question from somebody that just texted me, who lives farther up Cross Street.
Any... Do you have any knowledge of that?
Of what?
Why this wasn't done when the street was open for the other work?
Well, I mean, we didn't know about the EverSource project until it was relevant, so...
All right, who else is here for public comment on this? Come on up, sir. George? Hi, George.
Good evening. My name is George Nowell. I'm in Precinct 2, 68 Nelson Street. I'm a property owner at 86 Cross Street, which is the adjacent lot. I wonder if I could just ask through you to EverSource one question?
National Grid.
Did I understand correctly? I had trouble hearing back there that once that station is there, that you're only gonna be out there once a year?
For inspections and for... One time a year for like, we'll call it a day to be conservative for inspection, where they go through it in fine detail, and then they do quarterly, so every three months, they go in for a quick pressure test or pressure tech with a gauge, and then make sure the rigs and everything is functioning normally. And that's just a two-man crew and a pickup truck, though. So that's not... That doesn't even require a work, so they'll probably park at the soccer fields and walk over with a tool bag.
Because it seems to me, from my observations, that I've seen trucks up at Conant Road more often than three times a year.
This is the existing station you said?
Yeah.
It's... Yeah.
I'm pretty sure I did. Well, anyhow, and also I wondered... I'd like to ask, once this station is there and it's doing all the things it's supposed to do, if there was a 500-year flood event, during that event there was a crisis, would there be any reason for you to go to that station? Or if you went to it, could that station do all the things that it did the day before the flood?
Yeah, the station can take up to five... Four feet above the sidewalk of water before it even becomes an issue.
I think we've had that before.
Like, hold my beer?
Yeah.
I mean, in... If we look at... So the pictures that I was sent yesterday? They were a little further down the street, and we can look into that event, and if we need to go up a foot or two with the vent poles, like, that would be the solution.
But the vent poles can't get flooded, right?
Ultimately, and honest to be perfectly frank, it probably... You're getting into minute details on the effect it would have, like, consistently running like that and then freezing temperatures, it'd be a problem, right? If they flooded for a couple hours, I mean, the equipment's not designed for it, but it happens, and we haven't had problems, right? So it's kinda like one of those things, you just don't wanna get there ultimately.
So the last one of the pictures in there from the last flood was in January, so just in consideration of freezing temperatures, it was cold. It rained a lot. The whole river kinda flooded up, where you see the... It sort of flooded up the bike path and flooded under the bridge. But that was like January, so, you know, the weather, it's swinging now pretty drastically, so, you know, that could go back to freezing fairly quickly. Something similar to what happened in January happened again.
I guess my question for you is, how much history and knowledge has... Has National Grid dug into this flooding, this flood zone? Like, what do you mean? Have you looked at storms? Have you talked to the town? Have you talked, you know, what?
What we're going to do is we have the flood maps, and with our survey that was done last Thursday, where we state over the property lines, they're also coming back and they're putting in the flood elevations for us. So if it comes back and the... And whatever the elevation is that they tell us is the floodplain, we can make adjustments to our vents based on that information. Is that the question?
Yeah, I just wondered how much effort before...
That your vent is above the 100-year flood elevation.
Yeah, so I saw a picture where there was a truck like up to the windshield under the bridge, right? But we're probably five or six feet higher than that anyway. So if we had four feet... And this is... And I don't know, I don't have like, I'm not out there with a transit or whatever, but like, if we had four feet at the station, that'd be darn close to like the top of the bridge. Not the top, but the 10-foot-six or whatever the plances on that one, right? So I don't know. We just had the survey done in more detail last week to look into this issue, but...
And what if the regulator station itself is flooded? You pump it out?
Yeah.
And it can be flooded for, you know, when we have a large flood event, it can be flooded for days, right?
It's not.
Yeah.
So as part of your CONCOM supplemental, presumably you would provide the information on 100-year flood elevation, and then what elevation you're gonna put the top of this vent to confirm that it would work?
Yeah, yeah. So that's the... I mean, the standard one is four feet, but...
George, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, I do. So that sorta handles the elevation of the water at that point, but just for your knowledge, I mean, I've seen people diving off that Cross Street bridge, so I think it gets a little deeper than you expect. But going on, I mean, we only have one bike path in Winchester. We have to put a... Station, or whatever you wanna call it, right there, right on the bike path, right where the kids come out. I think it's more than four times a year they're gonna be out there. But if... Let's take National Grid's word for it, and they're gonna be there four times a year. The kids are gonna ride through those trucks or through that truck or the... Anytime they're out there servicing them, it's gonna be an inconvenience. Took us 25 years to build that bike path, and it seems just not even common sense to me to put that there. It's been enough, you know, I know it handles the nimby's, but we're gonna have a eight-unit housing project right there, right there, within the three months, probably. I mean, Mario's got all his permits for that the last time I talked to him. We know that it's busy. We've already contracted people, talked to people about traffic coming areas at that intersection. We've talked about doing a bump out. We've put in a flash-in crosswalk. I mean, we didn't do that just because we wanted to do it. We did it because it was dangerous. People were complaining that they were almost getting hit crossing the street on the bike. So there's not one legal parking spot... Well, I shouldn't say that. There are not suitable parking there. There's no... Sometime in the next 30 years, their truck is gonna be out there, and there not gonna be any place to park, and they're gonna park in front of the bike path, or they're gonna park in the street and it's gonna block traffic. And we can do that. There's no... You know, we'll probably all survive. Hopefully, no one's gonna get hurt. But why should we? We can do better than this. There's better spots. I know there are. So it's up to us. I mean, if that's what we wanna do, okay, I can live with it. It's not gonna bother my business. But I do have drunk kids that ride up in that bike path at nine and 10, and I hate to think of what can happen. I wasn't a real champion of that bike path 30 years ago, but I have to admit, it's pretty... It gives me chills someday to look out there and see the little towheads riding up the bike path. And I'd hate to see us make a crazy mistake because someone didn't have an extra half hour or so to explore a few more sites. But that's something we'll all have to decide, I guess, Laura.
Thank you, George.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Who's next?
Good evening, everybody. Jim Johnson. I live 126 Johnson Road, Precinct 6. I own property down in that area at 130 Cross Street. I've been there for almost 50 years. My main concern is this project's gonna go, whether it's 100 feet one way or another, it's gonna go. I wanna know what mitigation a town is receiving. Are you going to get... Are we gonna get curbs to make it a little safer? Are we gonna get a traffic bump out? What is a town in the neighborhood going to receive for this major inconvenience of probably a month, even though you say it's less? How can we improve the quality of life down in Cross Street for the pedestrians and the traffic? You know, I'd like to see curbing. I'd like to see designated signage. You gotta go... You gotta park these trucks somewhere. And you gotta be... The people have to get around traffic. I'm assuming when you do this, you always have police details?
The construction?
The construction, but the service, too.
If the service... On the service on the inspection day, if they interrupt traffic or pedestrian traffic, they will get a detail. Often, in this case, if they were able to park in the soccer place there...
Which is private property.
Yeah, right. But if they were able to get in agreement with them, then they would just carry a tool bag. I mean, it's not extensive.
What about the kids going to the Morocco school? Kids use it, but not many, to walk down the bike path. What provisions are you going to make if you have to work in that path to protect them?
I don't think we're in the bike path. I don't know. How do the kids use the bike path?
Well, that's my question. So are you... How far... You're to the right of the bike path, right?
If we were going south to north, so Forest Street was to your right, we are to the right of the bike path, yeah.
Are you going to affect the bike path? That's...
During construction, then we put it in...
Obviously, yes.
It's close, but then when it's done, we are not there. So the bike path there is...
Bike path runs...
Right here.
Was across the... Yeah.
So this is the railroad track. This is the park, so the bike path was right there.
Yeah.
And we're off... We're closer to this business here. We're about... We're honestly at the edge of that sidewalk.
Okay. So it's not gonna affect...
How many feet away from the bike path are you?
After the bike path, yeah.
We're going here.
It's pretty close.
It's close.
You get kids looking to see...
20? Is it 20 foot? Is it 20 feet?
So my concern is...
The vault itself is, we'll say 20 feet to be conservative. It's probably gonna be 17.
So where... I took a picture of it this afternoon. Where those pink... I assumed that the...
So glare, so much glare.
I can't control that. I assume that the pink ribbons were...
They did the right-of-way mark out. We're on the other side of that hydrant.
So you're very close to George Nowell's entrance?
So pass, like, pass where that is.
Yeah, we're right in the sidewalk, but probably after that state, between there and the driveway.
No, my concern is kids going to Morocco, kids coming and forth from the soccer club. He's very active in that general area in the last couple of years, and there has to be some sort of provisions to watch out and protect them. And I also think one of the stipulations is maybe the town should require a police detail whenever... And ever... No, not ever. It's not... It's going to work in the general area.
National Grid.
Just to have the police... Just to have some, keep an extra eye, not on the job, but in the surrounding area. Maybe direct traffic, maybe direct children. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
And I'd like to know, like I say, are we gonna get any mitigation out of that? Improve the site conditions, maybe add curbing's? Maybe update the curbing's?
Yeah. So I think you mentioned that you gotta rip the sidewalk up, so you're gonna put, you know, wherever the town wants you, you're gonna put the curbing back in that area. So that would be the mitigation. Anyone else here for public comment? Come on up, George Junior.
Thanks, everyone. I'm George Nowell Junior. My father spoke two speakers ago. I'm also a budding owner. I won't go over... Repeat all the concerns. I think everyone did a pretty good job of saying what concerns were, and I appreciate the presentation. That was nice. I will just reiterate, the flooding is real. I mean, that's a real, real thing. I don't know how many of you lived it there before. I've lived it four or five times. I've... That was back when I was working. We have a furniture moving company. I helped just about every resident on Brookside Ave and Forest Street clear out their basements, including hot water heaters and furnaces. Up... That water went from the basement all the way up into the first floor of those homes. It was so... The water was so deep that a resident walked out in wastewater and fell down a manhole, because the manhole cover had washed out. He caught himself before he went down. This is a friend of mine that happened. So when we just say flooding, I just... I know that you guys know, but I'm just worried that, "Oh, flooding, it's just a couple of kids skipping rocks down by a stream." It's not that. And those 100-year floods, which, like I said, I've lived through about four or five of them. I mean, you get six inch... Two or three inches of rain, which is what we just got on this past storm, on the bike path that just started overflowing. That's less than 100 feet from where that spot is. Six inches over that amount of time, that's flooding, and it's pretty severe. And that's happening all over the country with climate change. Just watch the news any day down in Texas, and... But in any event, I just wanted to make it clear that also, I don't know, the conspiracy theorist in me tells me that this much infrastructure in one area isn't a great thing. I don't know why, it just seems off to me. And lastly, you know, if this... If we move the regulator here to lessen residential impacts, which I understand, I get no one probably wants this in front of their house, and it's a real tough sell for anyone. And I'm not advocating to put it at Loring or Kirk Street or wherever, you know? I just know that I'd argue that from Kidstock down to the ballet school, I mean, to the math school, to the ballet school, to the soccer complex outside of elementary schools in Winchester, it's probably the largest pickup and drop-off areas in town. And I can say with 100% certainty, because I've done it, you park your truck there on that very spot during any of those times, leave it there for 15 minutes at 4:30 in the afternoon, and see how... It's chaos. Just can't do it. So if we're moving it there to lessen residential impact, I think you could make the argument, there's actually more residential impact, because so many residents are picking up and dropping their kids off there. And I'm gonna leave you guys with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, George. Anyone else here for public comment?
May I come? Precious?
Okay, Bob.
One of them caught my eye when you... Oh, did you mention that there's a window where you can cut out the old station and put the new station back?
Yes.
Because that was on... Because that wasn't relayed to us from the beginning when we walked in. So, if you can cut out the existing station and put the new station back, why aren't we doing that?
Well, it just doesn't work because of what's in the street and the power lines. Because we usually use very large fork trucks. They're almost fifty thousand pounds of structures. Or, we generally use a hundred-ton crane. And unless you were able to de-energize the lines...
Can we look at that before we settle on this location? Because Eversource put in some larger structures underneath some wires, and they were able to do it without a crane? So, can we look at that, just... Because that is ultimately the best location for the base?
For our personnel on that location. So, from the INR, the guys in the vaults, the speed in which the traffic is going there is part of their concerns for... That was one of the concerns for us, to not go there. As far as... We have the wires. The times in the street gets very complex because of what's in the street. And then, then the speed of the cars, there's not a lot of sidewalk there. I don't even think the sidewalk's six feet, so we'd have to go into the grass. So, these are the issues with that.
So, can we just continue this? I mean, I think we've heard, unless there are other residents that wanna speak on it, I think it seems like it's not fully baked at this point. And it may be the solution that we end up with, but I think coordinating with Eversource and coordinating with DPW at this point, we just need to move forward because I don't think we're gonna solve it tonight. And maybe some, to George's point, maybe some conditions around the time of service if we do put it in that location. That might be... If it's only a few times a year, and we say it can't be during these times, that might be a solution as well that works. So, but...
And also talking to Matt about the traffic management plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's good. Let me just see. Is there anyone else from public here that wanna make a comment on this? All right. So, I'm gonna close the public comment portion of this hearing. I'm gonna continue the hearing until a later date to be determined by all of you.
And you can come in as a resident and...
I'm gonna watch you on TV. And I think it's a good suggestion. I mean, just... I appreciate you both coming in. I appreciate all the information. You certainly, you know, have a lot of information. I just think, you know, this needs to be... I think there needs to be a little bit more dialogue between our DPW, Eversource. Because this is, as George kinda hit the nail on the head, this is a highly traffic area. I mean, I think Eversource has heard me say it a hundred times, you know, that, you know, all the after-school programs are in that area, in that little stretch. It doesn't look like much, but those buildings have a lot going on there.
The whole Cross Street.
Yeah. So, you know, maybe you figure something out. But I appreciate you both being here. I don't have a date to continue it at this point. You guys can just schedule that?
Sure.
Is that... Okay? We can kinda go from there.
So, to summarize, the three concerns are flooding, right, obviously? Then the traffic from the soccer fields and whatnot in this area, right? And then, the third thing was, if, can we shoehorn it back in where it came from? Right, those are the three.
And coordination with Eversource.
Well, coordination with Eversource, I mean...
Coordination with Eversource.
You know, to George's point, I mean, this is a lot of equipment. I mean, I remember, you know, the borings that went down, you know, underneath the river. I mean, I'm not an engineer at all. But there's a lot... I mean, it was... It took months to do that. And I don't want, you know... There's something about this equipment near each other that, you know... I think that just needs to be looked at, and it's just coordination with Eversource. Eversource may say there's no problem. But, I mean, I think you need to have that dialogue before you...
I was just gonna say with regards to that, they... Whoever they hired is their professional engineer to do the site design and their layout. They do ask for, like, whatever records they can get from us. And then they often do test pits just to confirm. Because they're required by law to stay so many feet away from...
I just don't know when that happened because all this Eversource work happened this summer. So...
When the design occurred, you mean?
I mean, I'm sorry. It's not the summer. This fall, right?
Just yesterday.
December, November? So, the conditions in the field have changed, so I don't know when they did that. I mean, if it was yesterday, fine, but I don't know, you know, recent... I mean, it was... Like, we were shooting at a moving target, so, for a couple of months there. So, I just think those conversations need to make sure... I feel more comfortable if you came back and said, "We've talked to Eversource, you know, we understand the heavy-duty equipment that's in the area. There's no concerns." Or, we need to go to a different location. Because there's a lot of equipment in that densely used area.
Yeah, the whole street.
But we... Yeah, because we still have our gas mean there. We can't... They better have a comment.
Our structure's already there.
Right, exactly. They better not.
We're not really adding anything other than the vault itself, right?
Yeah. Well, I get it. You know, I think there's PTSD in the area from...
No, it's very clear.
Very clear. So, I appreciate you both coming in. Thank you. So, you got some work to do, and we'll continue this hearing for another date.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, I'm gonna have Ann come up and then do the bond anticipation notes.
Hello.
Ann, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
So, tonight I have a packet for you after your meeting that I prepared on the side for you.
Get my wrist ready.
I know. Yeah, get your wrist ready. You're all color-coded and ready to go. So, I just have just a couple of details so you know what it is. So, this is a general application fan. There's two pieces to it. The first piece is the Affordable Housing Trust Property Acquisition on the corner of Swanton and Washington Street. And the second portion of this fan, actually, is quite a few items in it. Some of this is being refunded from last year. It includes Lake Street Bridge replacement, backer truck lynch feasibility study, and designing south reservation dam feasibility and engineering. The Arbor Lane and Wendell Pumping Station, Morocco Culver, and the final portion of the lynch construction. Borrowing. I think I got everything.
Not final. We have another one.
We do have another one. Okay, sorry.
Second to last.
Okay, second to last. So, the amounts on that, so it's a Series A and a Series B fan. So, the Affordable Housing Trust Property Acquisition is four million, fifty thousand dollars. Everything else is thirty-seven million, two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars. So, the total altogether is forty-one million, three-oh-one-three-sixteen. We... The town went out to bid with the help of our advisor, Hilltop Securities. We received quite a few bids. And the top bid was a four percent coupon rate on the bigger number, on the thirty-seven million. And that's a non-taxable. And on the four-million-dollar borrowing, that is a taxable property... Taxable property, taxable borrowing. And that was a five-point-two-five percent. And those would be the top, top bids that came in. So, I'm asking you tonight if you would please sign.
Any questions for Ann?
It's probably a lot of information, so...
Oh, it's good. Thank you, Ann.
Thanks for the details.
All right. If there's a motion, we can entertain it.
A move that we adopt all the votes as presented in the document distributed and available at the meeting.
It's it, huh? You don't have to read it?
I mean, I can if you want. It's your last meeting.
We'll waive the reading. We'll waive the reading.
Second, second. All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Is that the whole agenda, that that was related to the...
All the documents presented in the meeting.
Thank you, Ann. We'll sign those tonight. Thanks.
I like that.
Do you use that motion all the time?
All right, get... Going back up to committee appointments. So, we have, just taking reverse order, Board of Registered Voters, there's two reappointments. Robert Colt and Mary Ellen Lannan, both terms to expire March 31st, 2027. Any questions or discussion on that? All right. Is there a motion?
A motion to reappoint Robert Colt to the Board of Registers of Voters for the term to expire March 31st, 2027.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to appoint Mary Ellen Lannan to the Board of Registers of Voters for the term to expire March 31st, 2027.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, and then we have Board of Appeals, one regular position, one incumbent, David Faganbaum. I think he's here. Oh, he's here. If there's any questions for him. Any discussion on this?
So, what's the current makeup? Do we have all the regular positions filled at the Board of Appeals? Or do we have...
We have all the regular positions filled. And we have all the alternate positions filled at the moment. But, that could change after tomorrow.
After tomorrow, yes.
So, Bill Faganbaum was supposed to be reappointed. He was only taking up a little bit, so he wants to wait until after tomorrow. And things are gonna... No matter what happens tomorrow, things are gonna change. So, if...
Okay.
There will be...
So, and so, it'll potentially be two positions have to be posted.
I was just trying to remember, do we have an open alternate and all the regulars were done? This has nothing to do with Mr. Faganbaum, but...
So, we'll have one... There's potentially one permanent position open maybe after tomorrow. And then one alternate position is open no matter what because the term expires March 31st.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
So, there'll be another appointment, in theory, as of March 31st.
We have two permanent... We have three permanent members right now and three alternates.
Okay.
All right.
Got it.
Sitting right now, as we speak.
As nine o'clock.
As of nine o'clock, as the clock tower strikes nine.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
I'll just say thank you to Mr. Faganbaum for his service. It's been very busy and it's been very difficult for us to fill the ZBA positions. And so, I'm glad that you're re-upping. You've done great work. We'll ultimately have some more appointments, so hopefully, we can have more residents apply for positions and keep it full and keep it moving, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, if I could just... Can I say two words?
Just two?
Two words. I'm done. It's been a great opportunity to serve the town, and it's a wonderful board that we have. We have wonderful staff to support us. Beth and Janine and Ken Cafarell is helping with things. And I've put a tremendous amount of work into this outside of the matters that come before the board to try to make it administratively smoother. And I think I've succeeded, and I would very much like to keep at it.
All right. So, is there a motion?
A motion to reappoint David Faganbaum to the Board of Appeals for the position to expire March 31st, 2027.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I'll vote no, Patty. Thank you. All right, thank you, David. You're all set. Thanks for your service.
Thanks for sitting through.
Next up, it's the Eversource New 345 KV Project. Do we have this working?
I did bring handouts, so I do have those available, and I have enough for...
Yeah, it's just not...
I do, yeah.
Those watching at home.
Does it work back here?
Oh, it works back there?
Yeah, it works on here.
Thank you.
Can you get the computer? Will you get the computer, too?
Yeah, I'm seeing it.
I took two. Yeah, I don't need two.
I don't have enough for two.
I don't want to. So, our viewers at home can see the presentation, if anybody actually is watching. All right, if you guys wanna introduce yourselves, and then feel free to go get your presentation.
Jason Wright, Committee Relations for Eversource, representing Winchester. With us tonight is also Miles Kennedy from Project Services, Thomas Clunin, and Erg from our transmission team. Appreciate the opportunity again to be here tonight to provide tenure, look ahead from both transmission and the distribution side of the house. Before we get started, I wanna take a moment to thank the chair, as well as the town manager, Winchester Police Department, DPW Engineering, and a special thank you to Paul Ganji for his assistance. I think it's safe to say without him, we wouldn't be sitting where we are today. I'm gonna just give a quick...
We made him retire.
Did you do the same thing to you?
Did the same to me, too.
That's what I was thinking.
If I may, I just wanted to give a quick update on Woburn to Wakefield, Mystic to Woburn. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Tom to give the outlook that we spoke about. Woburn to Wakefield and Mystic to Woburn, both of those lines are... Or have been completed in January. Excited to announce that as of 2:30 today, the Woburn to Wakefield line was actually placed in service. We anticipate the Mystic to Woburn line to follow, hopefully by end of week. So, those are two milestones that we're very excited to announce. And again, just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge and recognize that we certainly appreciate the town's help in getting us here, as well as the staff as well. Regarding distribution projects, those are a little more difficult to forecast. Those are... We're more reactive to those, as you probably know. Customers, businesses, and whatnot approaching Eversource for various electrification needs. The big one going on currently at this moment, as you're aware, I'm sure, is Waterfield Street, the MTA project. About six hundred feet of distribution conduit going on there. If it's helpful for the board, we're more than happy to come back, whether it's quarterly or maybe twice a year to talk through with our account executive any projects, large-scale projects for distribution that are in the line, as well as obviously the transmission projects.
So, I appreciate that. Can I just... So, these two projects, the Woburn-Wakefield 345 KV line, the Mystic-Woburn 115 KV line, they don't service any Winchester customers, right? They're only for neighboring towns. I think this one that we're gonna talk about tonight is for the Cambridge area. Is that... Isn't that... It just happens that we live next to this substation, and they need to run through our town.
It's transmission versus distribution, so they... The lines go from substation to substation. So, there's no substations here in Winchester.
Right, so you're just using our town to go through to get to the substation.
Substation to substation.
Because we have butted the station, and you're improving all these lines, unfortunately for us, you gotta come through our town.
Woburn substation does feed the local distribution network in Woburn and Winchester.
But these lines that you're using are being... Are gonna feed these other communities, right?
Well, not really, right? So, they feed Woburn substation. So, if you think about it at a distribution level, you are fed by Woburn substation. So, it needs to be stepped down from the transmission. Think of it as the transmission line being the sources of feeding the distribution customers. However, they're at a higher voltage. We can come back and figure out the percentage, you know...
So, you're telling me these lines that you're putting in are feeding our substation electricity for our residents to use?
Yeah, so...
Some.
Some. Some, a portion, yes, correct. So, you know, at transmission level, we're feeding transmission and distribution substations, right? Then this voltage from these transmission sources are stepped down for distribution usage, right? So, they distribute... They are distribution infrastructure to fit... To feed all the neighboring towns, right? We can come back and figure out the percentage on my trip of the town is being fed from that substation.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, without transmission, there's not gonna be any distribution, right?
Right, just like you were paying into social security today. You're gonna get a portion of it later. You're not gonna get it all, so just...
Right.
Be used to it.
The way it was explained to me was that our substation is feeding... It's going downhill. So, our substation is feeding into Cambridge or Wake... Woburn and Wakefield. And, you know, it's... The high voltage is at our substation and going... Flowing down, not the reverse.
So, the demand of the transmission reverses depending on what other sources are out on the transmission network, right? So, not necessarily you could say that when you link two substations together, right, depending on all contingencies in the system, they're always gonna go one way. You know, if the need is for that substation, they'll backfeed back, right? If you wanna dispatch generation, let's say, that would even service out of the Massachusetts territory, let's say, in New Hampshire, right? If they need be, if you have, you know...
So, aside from Woburn, is there another substation that feeds Winchester? Or do we... Does all Winchester get fed from Woburn?
A good portion of this gets fed to Woburn. I would have to look at the distribution.
We'd have to come back.
And we could, you know, there is a map that kinda localizes, you know, the distribution network map.
And the overall goal is just redundancy on the grid, right, and creating more capacity as the demand on, you know, electricity increases regionally, right?
Correct, yeah. Tom is gonna cover a little bit about the benefits.
Yeah, and I think the two recent projects that came through were really born out of reliability. And some of the things Ergen talked about, about the needs for the transmission flows and the contingencies behind that. If you lost a line, what does that do to the grid stability? The one I'm gonna talk about today is more of an asset condition. It's an existing line. It's reached its useful life, and we're looking at replacements from a program-wide perspective. So, that's the one I wanna talk about.
Is that one primarily down Cambridge Street?
Yes. Yes, yes. Yes, 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 yes. Route, Route three all, all the way up until you get to, to Pond.
Oh, okay, all right.
Can I ask a question on the, uh, Washington Cross Street before we get into what's next?
That's been ready for it.
Oh, boy.
Um, so I, I see that the repaving is gonna be kinda from Marion, um, down towards Main Street and then there's, uh, improvements at Davidson Park and Washington Street. I know from the previous paving of Washington, there's some puddling when we have rain that's, um, at where the bike path hits Washington Street and, uh, Andrea Circle. Um, and I don't know if any, just looking at that is, is possible.
We, um, I, I forgot to mention that, um, on, I believe, Thursday this week, we'll be doing a sidewalk with, um, with Bob as well to finalize our review of punch list, um, restoration items. So we'll make note of that, certainly.
Thanks.
All right.
So what, but Bob, can we hold off on the paving until we make a decision on the vault?
All right, the paving's not coming up. It's not imminent.
Okay, good.
It's a lot of work we have to do for restoration before.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Those driving the presentation, I think we're on the, the third page, which is labeled slide two on the board. Jason just went through the project update, so, uh, again, I, we came tonight, um, as part of a new project here, uh, which we first introduced back in November and I, I think we caught everybody by surprise, which wasn't the intention. Uh, so we were asked by, uh, Beth, the town manager, and, uh, later Rich, the, uh, select chair to, um, come present to the board here. And we, we did wanna get back here sooner.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll talk a little bit about the process, uh, we were going through for routing of the new line. Um, took us a little longer to get, get through that, which is why we're here in, uh, late first quarter. Um, but before, you know, I get too deep into the project details, um, I, I did wanna, uh, talk a little bit about the program. So there's a couple of slides that we do have that kinda highlights the, uh, the underground cable modernization program, which you can see in the top left of the, uh, the presentation here. And it's, um, it's, we call it the UCMP. As, as part of the program, we're looking at Eversource's underground transmission assets. So a lot of our, um, existing transmission lines do run underground in a technology we call a high-pressure fluid-filled pipe-type cable. Um, so you'll see HPFF, PTC, and really what it is, is.
So PCBs, right?
No, no, no PCB-free in the oil, yes, yes. Okay, we have an engineer here. Um, so, so, so yes, it, it is a, uh, uh, oil-filled line, that's the insulation medium for that cable system. Um, it is, uh, somewhat of an older technology that we are, uh, looking as part of, as infrastructure's aging out to look at replacing some of those in some cases.
What do you replace it with?
Uh, cross-length, no, cross-length polyethylene, so it's polyethylene insulated.
Yeah.
So pl- plastic, uh, material there and then just running PVC duct bank versus a, a steel conduit. Um, but, but again, as, as part of this UCMP, um, the type of projects we're doing are asset-conditioned. They're, they're not new lines like what you, you just experienced here. Construction will be, uh, somewhat similar. This, this slide here, um, talks about, um, the, the need for the project. So from a liability perspective, uh, this technology, um, where manufacturing capabilities aren't what they used to be. We're actually down to, to one manufacturer, which is driving some of the decision-making on how we're, uh, replacing the assets, why we're moving to a different technology, because we don't wanna be constrained to that one supplier there. Um, also, I, I mentioned before the useful life, um, most of the assets, uh, here, I'll, I'll talk about on the next page what that, uh, age looks like for those, uh, assets there. And then ca- capacity, we had had on at the same time, we're looking at upgrading or changing technology here. We're looking at, uh, adding the capacity to the system that future load growth requires. I'm sure you're familiar with some of the, um, new initiatives out there are, are shifting away from fossil fuels and it's putting a, additional, uh, demand on the electric grid. So, uh, capacity improvements in the future is something that you're, you're gonna see, uh, built into many, many transmission and distribution projects.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Um, Ken left, but don't we have a goal here in Massachusetts about, was it twenty thirty? We're supposed to have fifty percent of our energy from renewables?
In Winchester.
Yeah, but I think it's statewide too. So from, uh, when you guys look at your plan and look at, whether it's data mining, we're all gonna have mini splits and, you know, compressors outside of our house, we're just gonna suck more and more energy. From a growth standpoint, does that look like that's gonna be twenty percent over ten years, thirty percent? And so when we look at Ca- Cambridge Street, are you putting in a pipe? I, I know the number of volts, but you know, how much you could stuff through that pipe? Are you looking to increase that by, you know, thirty percent or forty percent over what's there today? And Jimmy and Roger here from our capital planning committee, we always talk about like a life cycle of a school might be forty or fifty years. Are these, so as a town, we think about, hey, these are gonna last forty years and we're gonna be back doing the same thing in forty years 'cause nothing lasts forever.
Yeah, we have, we recently filed, uh, what's called the Electric Sector Modernization Plan. It's about a four-hundred-page document. Uh, we do have an executive summary, which I can provide to the board, that's about, about ten pages. Uh, what that document does is it basically pulls, pulls the curtain back, if you will, and says, you know, this is the grand scheme, not just specific to obviously Winchester, but the entire state.
Yeah.
I think, you know, long-term to that, to that end, it's something like seventeen new substations. Um, upgrades to twenty-six, no, no, not, not here, not, not, yeah, statewide.
In Woburn.
Yeah, yeah.
One's in Stonem, one's in Medford.
Um, so to that end, where that's kind of, obviously the, us as a utility, we have an, you know, an obligation to, to quite literally keep the lights on. Um, and the state turns to us and says, you know, what, what's your long-term kind of clean energy objectives or plan to get us to that, to that twenty fifty goal? Um, if I recall correctly, it's something like the average household will have or consume three and a half times as much electricity by twenty fifty. So that, to that, to that end, you know, it's a very comprehensive document, I'm not the engineer in the room, but I can, uh, uh, well, I'm happy to, to share that with you because again, to your point, our alliance, you know, strengthening of the grid, um, EV chargers, um, you know, less reliance on, on, on gas. And again, you know, as I think, uh, Michael alluded to, you reduce your resiliency on one, you obviously increase your resiliency on the other. So, um, that's something I can share with the board, but, um.
To, to John's point, you know, is the pipe big enough that you can run other cables through?
Yes.
Like, is there planning for that?
I can answer that. So the rating of the proposed conductor size for this line will meet twenty fifty forecast, demand forecast. So we're proposing here to be eight-inch power conduit diameter. The conductor size is five thousand KC mil. If you do just a comparable, what's existing there, we're going from a two thousand KC mil to a five thousand KC mil. The average rating increase just by stepping up the size of conductor is roughly about forty percent more. So, you know, at Eversource, right, our internal system planning studies seven years out. However, we have another group which just studies, you know, initiatives across the region, plus looking out the electrification of the grid. And that, they are the final approvers, right, for the rating, looking all the way up to twenty fifty, making sure that, you know, our team is sizing up the appropriate conductor size to meet that twenty fifty demand. So from that perspective, you know, we wouldn't be upgrading these lines, let's say, ten years or fifteen years from now, just to meet the future demand.
Great, thank you.
And then the, the last, uh, point I wanna make on this slide here is just for, um, I guess benefits and need here is changing the technology is, is gonna have a, uh, environmental improvement, right? We're using a, a different medium in here, we're not having oil to come to deal with the system that has potential for higher environmental release. On, onto the next slide, thank you. All right, so this next slide, I'm not gonna spend too much time on. Uh, this is a little more on the program background, I'll, uh, chip in if it has anything addition to add. But, uh, Eversource owns and operates most of the, uh, pipe-type cable here in New England and that covers both, uh, one, one fifteen KV and three forty five KV transmission lines. The earliest lines were built in nineteen forty-nine and the average age is close to forty years and that's about the same, uh, threshold for the, the useful life on these. Our lines that we're talking about here, the three forty-six and three sixty-five, were built in seventy-six and, uh, eighty-six. Um, so they're past and coming up on, on that useful life here. So this is, this is why it fell into the category of, uh, something we're gonna look at. Next slide, please. Uh, this next one here, um, I, I, I probably don't wanna, or have to say too much. I, I think I heard enough listening here, um, and, and the times we've been here before about, um, some of the frustrations with, uh, the recent work that we had, um, come through the town here. And, um, you know, th- this here is, is about demonstrating that we are, we are learning, uh, from the work that we've, we've, uh, we've done here. Any organization, we have to learn to grow, we have to fill the gaps, we have to get better in our performance and execution and, and do a better job, um, in the communities that we're working. Um, uh, ju- just going through a few here, so, uh, just to make sure you understand what we're, what we're saying here. I, I think it echoes some of the feedback we've, we've already heard about the civil contractor perspective. You know, one of the things we do recognize is that we didn't get off on, on the right foot with these past couple of jobs. And, uh, I think it was a challenge up until where we are today, uh, to get some traction on that. So, uh, one of the things that we're, we're focused on, uh, with any future project work, not just what we're proposing in the town here is we need to get better in our execution and, and a lot of that has to do with setting the tone right at the beginning of the job. Um, so, so for us, we're, we're focused more on, uh, constructability and, and making sure that we're, we're ready for the actual construction of the work. You know, there's a phase to go do that, um, even when we talk about traffic management plans down here at the bottom, uh, it seems like there was inconsistencies that led to a lot of frustration there. From a coordination perspective, we have different projects here. Um, here you'll see we don't have, uh, a lot more coming through the area, but, you know, we, we recognize, uh, again, the, uh, strain that put on having different, different heads you had to talk to at the table, um, and, you know, not having that single focal, uh, point of contact. So that's one of the things that, that we understand and we wanna make a commitment to is, is having that, uh, point of contact. And I'm sitting here today, so, um, I, I know I'm a new face, uh, but I, I, I intend to keep coming back as, as much as, as you'll have me or, or you want me for information here. Uh, the laydown areas, I, I think even tonight, we heard something about, uh, uh, the frustrations there. Again, show-up spots and, and not having that coordinated, um, well before construction was a lot of what we heard. And, uh, again, that's something that we look at from a construction planning perspective to make sure that we are ready for execution. So we know we gotta do that differently. Communication, same thing, um, too reactive, uh, we've heard that a lot. We wanna make sure that we're providing the timely updates, we, we set that cadence, we agree with that cadence is, we adjust as we need to, to make sure that, that, you know, you are, you're getting the information, uh, that you need to also communicate to the community here. I saw it here tonight, I saw the concerns that you guys have to deal with. I know we put a lot of that strain on you, so, um, I mean, it's real, we wanna make sure we get the right information out there to you. Traffic management plans, I, I think I talked about that, uh, before, um, but again, that was late planning. Um, we recognize it's an iterative process and we need to do better there. Uh, the next slide is on the, this is, again, this was a request, this was the, the ten-year plan, just to give you an outlook of what we had in the pipeline coming down there, 'cause you heard new project, you just had two come through, uh, still essentially here. And, um, I wanted to give you a good idea of what, what was coming down, so, uh, you know, we do have the, uh, two projects here set to wrap up and get into restoration, um, which we'll, we'll have to again learn how we go through that process with punch listing and making sure we know, uh, uh, performance of the contract, as if there's anything else to learn from there, we will. I, I put on this south Woburn substation, uh, security fence here. It's, it's not necessarily a major project, it's not actually even in the community, but it's gonna be, uh, visible when it does go into construction. It is in early design, uh, that will continue into, uh, next year. So we're not completely firm on the, on the construction dates there, but that's a, a good forecast for what we have right now.
So, so that is, there's a massive new school being built across the street. So in terms of timing, right? Um, it, design is, design is a good place to be in calendar year twenty twenty-four. Uh, the new school, they hope to open in the fall of twenty twenty-five.
That's right, on Pond Street.
Right.
Okay.
Like diagonally across the street.
Okay.
So, you know, earth movers, I mean, a fence is not a massive new school, but it's a lot of equipment, um.
Yeah.
Lot of trucks.
Yeah, lot, lot of trucks, lot of trucks, it's gonna be visible when we're.
For, for the next year and a half.
Okay. What, when does that start construction?
They expect to finish, they just, they already started in September of twenty twenty-five.
It'll be open fall twenty twenty-five, hopefully.
Okay. Didn't even notice, it's good, okay. Um, and then the, the, the next one, this north Cambridge to Woburn. So this is, this is the project that, that we introduced back in November that we have more slides on in the packet here. And again, it's a asset-conditioned project, um, we're still early in the, uh, the planning and it's, it's really routing analysis right now, so we're not into, into that, uh, design phase. But we are looking to, um, get into that quickly, uh, develop that, um, locate utilities and be ready for siting filing here, uh, early next year. So it, it is, uh, it is coming up.
So you're asking a four-year construction period, but that's through the different communities, right?
Through the different communities, yeah.
Our community for four years.
We, we, we'd like to get through each, each community's gonna be different, we'd like to get through them as quick as we can. Uh, we recognize that there's, there's gonna be constraints with how, how many crews we can get in and how much you're, you're capable of supporting. But that, 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 I think, uh, will come more up in the planning, um, how, how we can actually go execute that. Design usually proceeds, uh, that level of detailed planning.
I should mention that the new school, um, at the same time, we have, in, in your sort of yellow planning and filing, we have traffic projects that will be occurring, um, related to the school along Pond Street. So, I mean, one consideration is to maintain and preserve the changes that were made, but also there's a lot of, a lot of concerns about Pond Street as a whole, um, to consider if the whole. Whole street's gonna be ripped up again, um, how traffic and safety improvements can take place when it's put back.
Uh, the traffic, um, upgrades now, are they significant changes? Like this is a new school, there's nothing in the community up there right now, so it's.
No, no, there was, there was this new school there.
Okay.
It's being, it's gonna be twenty percent bigger.
Okay.
And it's gonna be a completely different location to the school is.
Okay, so just upgrades.
Long Pond Street where, you know, the plan is to, you know, um, shorten crosswalks, you know, bump outs for intersections, speed bumps in that area, so, you know, we'd hate to do that work. I mean, it's gonna cost us two and a half.
And then have us come behind.
Come in the next year and start digging up.
Okay, now we, we got, we got that noted.
And we can get you that plan as well because we, you know, have a design and engineering on it and, and, you know, if there is, you know, a contribution to make as far as mitigation, I know you guys like mitigation to be connected right to the, the site. That's, that's what it is and it's, it's traffic improvements.
Okay.
Richard's saying it's, you know, um, you know, bump outs, speed bumps.
We'll note in action to, to get that, you know, pulled. Okay, I appreciate that feedback. Um, and then the, the, the last thing I got noted down here, this is, um, it's a two eleven, five fourteen XY. So it's actually the, the sister line to the, the, um, this is the excellent, the sister line to the, uh, Y-line that just came, came through the, uh, the town here, the, um, Mystic to Woburn. Um, this one, I, I, just noting that here, we are, uh, actively working down and are getting set to go work, uh, a corrosion repair in the city of Medford on this line. Um, so we, we've engaged with them, um, we are set to do this work, uh, right now, um, at the end of the school year. Uh, and we're also looking at another section, uh, in Winchester, actually, at the Abrejonah, uh, potentially control, corro- corrosion there, we're looking to go do a visual inspection. Right now, nothing's intrusive that we're going to do, other than the repair we have to do in Medford. But we are also starting to develop a plan for how we further assess this, this line for corrosion. Uh, 'cause it does, it does look like it's a aged, aged asset condition, so it, there's a chance it turns into something more. But right now, we're just highlighting that we are doing some corrosion assessments. Um, other than that, I think we talked about the, the distribution would be normal business. We're not gonna show that on here, you'll, you'll see that pop up as new services are requested. On, onto the next page. Uh, this one, again, I'm, I'm not gonna spend too much time here. This is just a map that highlights those major projects that I talked about here. You got, uh, the, um, Woburn to Wakefield in green, um, you got the Mystic to Woburn in orange. You got the existing route for the north, Cambridge to Woburn in, in blue. And then we show the, uh, south Woburn station up just outside the, um, town limit there. The next one's probably gonna foster more discussion, more, more questions, more comments. This is, um, this, these are the current proposed routes. So when we came, uh, here in November, we had a different set. Um, this is, uh, more recent, somewhat refined, uh, incorporating feedback that we did get from, from, uh, the town here. Um, it, it, it's, it's a process. And again, I, I mentioned it's, it's early, uh, in the planning phase here. We did hope to, um, be more complete at this point and, and have a thorough set of candidate routes to, to go through. But I don't think that's far around the corner, we're still going through the, uh, the analysis here. But I, I can just walk through and hit the different routes and then talk about some of the ones we've already moved off here. But I, I can just walk through and hit the different routes and then talk about some of the ones we've already moved off here. Uh, just so you have a history of the progression and then feel free to jump in, of course, and ask any questions or share any feedback you have, any of those. But the, the existing route, um, it's about two, 2.1 miles in Winchester, that's, that's going up Route 3, uh, Cambridge Street there. Uh, we, we still have that on as, as a good viable route from a, from a technical perspective. In yellow, uh, you see Route 1A, uh, that's about two and a half miles in Winchester. That's up Mystic Valley Parkway, Wildwood Street, uh, Woodside Drive. Um, still on the table, again, feedback we got was that was, that's part of the existing Mystic to Woburn project, um, potential for some utility congestion in there. We have, we have looked at some of that, uh, but we, we haven't ruled it out, uh, at this point, uh, from that perspective.
So I'll just mention, you know, at the end there, by Winter Pond, that's kind of where we're doing our, our work for the Lynch School. Right at the very end there, we have that little yellow line, so.
Yeah, so.
Some of those intersections there.
Exactly, all of them, Pond, Woodside.
And I know, I mean.
The goal is for that work to be completed by the time the school opens in September of 2025. So we're subject to town meeting, funding it this spring, we'll be bidding that project this summer.
Okay. Okay, got that noted again, uh, in, uh, in, in green, we have, uh, Route 2, uh, which is three miles about Winchester. That's Ridge Street and Wildwood. I, I do want to note on this that we did have some variations, uh, on this. Um, part of our discuss, last discussion, we had of trying to get some more routes outside of, uh, Winchester. So we did have one, uh, carrying up Ridge into Woburn, uh, but there were some technical constraints that we did have, uh, that we had to eliminate that one as, as we got closer to the South Woburn Station coming in from Woburn.
So just on this one, I'll mention that we just finished a DOT traffic light project in that intersection by that Ridge Street. And Johnson, um, was just redone and the school itself, you know, that road was done, um, you know, when the school was put in, so.
What was the intersection again?
Ridge and Johnson.
That was the hook of the green one.
Yeah.
The left turn.
Yep.
Good.
So, again, just trying to avoid disturbing work we just completed.
I don't, I don't give you too many options for that, so sorry. Um, uh, again, uh, another variation off here, we, we, we did try to take it, uh, outside of Winchester completely and, and go through Lexington. It added another three miles to the route, so it's, it's something we did, we did rule out.
So is there any routes that are being considered that doesn't involve Winchester?
Not, not currently.
So everything's, it's coming through Winchester?
Again, after we last talked, we did go back and reevaluate that and see if there's, uh, ways we can reduce the, the length there. But, uh, we, we couldn't, we couldn't get it with the variations we had. So right now, um, everything you see, um, there's, there's a route coming through.
So just, why, why wouldn't you just do the existing route? It's the shortest route, it's commercial, I mean, why?
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's gonna be a pain for construction, you know, the metered road, but why, why wouldn't you do that?
We had now, but th- th- this is the process we have to go through for, um.
I mean, the other neighborhood, I'm just saying you're going by schools, you're going through neighborhoods, uh, and you, I mean, you heard some of the neighbors here about Cross Street. And so I just don't know why.
It makes the most sense to us too, I think, when we go through the process, I mean, some of the things you mentioned with the, with the schools and whatnot, that, that comes into analysis there. And, um, the, again, the reason why we're, we're, um, taking longer with this is not actually what we have to do up here in Winchester. It's more how we're getting out of the North Cambridge Substation. Um, so we've had more challenges working down that way there, otherwise we probably would have been having a discussion on the candidate routes. Here, here's what we have and, and here's how we're going through scoring, so. But do, do appreciate that, uh, feedback there. Um, all right, so, so that was, that was Route 2. We did previously have a, a Route 3C, which, um, uh, came up main street through the center of town, but, uh, feedback, that's, that's not here any longer. Um, same thing with a, a Route 5, which was, uh, following the MBTA tracks up to the center of town and jumped off in the center of town. Uh, we looked at extending that on the tracks, there's some constraints there, so we, we had to rule that one out too. And then we do have, um, still showing on here is, in orange is the, the 4H, which is about 2.9 miles in Winchester. That's Ridge Street, Lachlan Road, and then it jumps on the, um, existing route for the Mystic to Woburn there, up Cambridge Street. So, uh, again, feedback, uh, we recognize there's elementary school there, um, some recent townwork, I think, was done around, uh, around the school, which I think there was some utility congestion, uh, highlighted there. But we do have, um, data, keep, still keeping it as a, as a viable route at this point. So, uh, just like we said in November, the plan is to wrap up, uh, the routing analysis and, and then come back and, and have a discussion on, on the candidate routes there. We, we still intend to do that, I, I, I hope that's in the, the next couple of months here. Um, but again, we, we did have some challenges getting out of Cambridge, we're, we're still working through at this point, so.
And when you file with the EFSB, you're gonna present a preferred route and alternative route, is that?
Right now, that's the filing strategy, yes, yeah. Okay.
How does this work? Uh, you know, it comes out of Winchester, it's gonna go through Arlington to go to North Cambridge. How does this work in terms of creating a plan here and then coordination with Arlington and Cambridge?
It, it's, it's the same process. So, uh, essentially, we'll go on with a, a set of, uh, routes when we're looking at what we call universal routes. We have several different, uh, main paths and then we'll get feedback on some of the constraints, uh, interfaces, we may have conflicts. And then, um, that helps eliminate some of those or create new variations of them. Um, and then they, they, they still continue to link up, but it's a, it's an iterative process that we have to go through.
Have you gotten feedback from Arlington on any?
We've got, we've, we've met with Arlington a couple of times. Uh, we haven't, uh, sat with Cambridge specifically on this project again, because we've had trouble, uh, bringing a viable set of routes that we can, we can actually talk, talk through with them and get their feedback. But that, that's near term in, in the plans here to, to go do that. We have other, um, regularly scheduled meetings with them from other projects we have.
What's Arlington's position on the existing routes?
Uh, I, I think it was overall was positive, there was a, not on the main route, but there's one bridge replacement that they were doing on. That's not on the main route though.
Yeah, it's like here, it, it's in parents, but we've gone with them three or four times.
Do you know they're doing work along that road now?
Yeah.
Yeah, Cambridge Street, yeah.
All right. I think so. Anyone else on there?
So I think, I mean, I, we can discuss as a board later, but I think quarterly updates seem to make sense to me. I don't think twice a year is, but we're gonna know a lot more about Lynch's traffic. And then, you know, the next couple of quarters, so, I'm gonna always discuss later. But I think maybe plan on quarterly and if we don't want to have you come in, we'll let you know, so.
Okay.
I think more communication is better.
It seems like it's been quarterly anyways, but more in a reactive sense, so, you know.
We're ahead of construction now.
Uh, and that related to the, the paving and, and Cross Street, I think it'd be helpful to just get an update as that.
Great, anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you. And my, my, my contact number is in here, so if, if you need me, you can get me. And SCADA, Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition System. It was too early for me to start doing this and yelling things from the back of the room, but I was gonna.
But we all knew, we just wanted to see if he knew.
That was a test. Mike's over here showing off.
I believe John may know, but I don't, that may be, but I don't know about the rest yet.
I had no idea.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, uh, CPC Spring Town Meeting Update, Jimmy and Roger. Oh, no, wait.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jimmy and Roger.
Yeah, it is.
That's you guys.
It's like, there's no one left in the room.
Who's left? Who's Jack?
It's their turn anyway.
It's a lot of letters.
Hey, guys.
Good evening, everybody, congratulations, Rich. On your early retirement. The capital committee is here tonight to explain, um, our capital planning warrant articles. We're asking for a little input on the CPA and to, uh, talk about the pending finance committee article regarding the stabilization accounts. Don't mind Roger, we'll, um, brief you on the capital planning articles. Now, who's to follow up?
Okay, um, most of this is exactly the same that you saw from the Fall Town Meeting Report, um, but to go through it, Article 2 will be the funding articles that we have. Um, the first motion will be $143,000 for ADA projects, that's $18,000 more than, uh, we typically do. What we are doing is putting some money back into the ADA account. As you may recall, they funded and pushed us over the top with some, uh, money for the, uh, Parkhurst Elevator. And since they put the last money in, when we got some money back, we figured it was only right that it go back into the ADA account. So that's a little bit bigger than, than normal, but that's why the difference is there. Motion 2 is to fund roads and sidewalks in five hu- to $500,000, which is our target, which combined with Chapter 90 money, puts us over the million dollar target that, uh, for roads and sidewalks that we've been working toward. Motion 3 is to fund a DPW scissor lift and associated trailer. That's one of those things that you say, I never want to get up on and they can go up and change lights and things like that in very high, high places. This actually has payback on us because we currently rent this, so this is a, a good, um, a good article, a good piece of equipment for us to buy. Motion 4 is $93,000 for a worn-out wood chipper, um, that DPW needs as they go about their regular work. Motion 5 is $135,000 for an athletic field mower, one of those very large industrial mowers that the blades come down on the side so that they can plow through, uh, vast fields quickly. Motion 6 is, uh, into the water and sewer retain, the, all, all of those were from the capital stabilization fund. Um, one thing that's missing, if you have a keen eye, uh, we did back out, um, from the building stabilization fund. We were, we're planning on going forward with the DPW generator replacement in the Fall Town Meeting, but, um, uh, management and staff decided that they weren't ready to proceed with that, so that's been pulled from this, that was for 150K. Um, Motion 6 moves into, uh, the water and sewer, uh, enterprise fund, uh, $150,000 for the MS4 permit, which obviously we have to do. Um, Motion 7, um, is $15,000 to begin engineering work on a second columbarium inside the cemetery. It was very successful when we did that a while ago, this is just to do engineering work for a, a second one in a different portion of the cemetery. Motion 8 is for a dump truck, also for the cemetery. Um, this is a little bit funded differently because we didn't have as much money in the water, in the cemetery permanent care fund that we wanted. So we're using 55,000, uh, from the cemetery trust fund and then supplementing it with 35,000 from the capital stabilization fund in order to achieve that. Questions on any of those? Hey Roger, on the, on mower, was that for, uh, one that wore out? Or is it just, uh, we're gonna do more mowing and not use as many subcontractors? No, well, he's gone, but, uh, it's, it's worn out, it's, we, we have one. And it's just.
It's meant to use for life.
Yeah, okay, great, thanks.
It's not getting reliable and the fear is it's gonna cost an awful, it's outside of the maintenance budget, tree repair.
Perfect, thank you. Roger, can I just ask one question that has nothing to do with that necessarily? Um, but, um, the fence around the cemetery, the kind of old chimney fence there? With the barbed wire, I mean, is that intended to keep people in or out? I just, I drive by it every day, I don't know what the objective is because we've.
So they replaced a lot of it, that, with that wood fence, right?
Well, yeah, but then the other side that's, you know, further down Palmer.
Up by Lynch?
Yeah, is, um.
And down by Palmer, yeah.
I mean, we've been making an effort to kind of open up the cemetery a little bit more as a community resource and it's definitely like a lot more activity up there, it's, it's, it's nice, but there's just that kind of portion of fence that seems like, that's almost, not even to replace it, but just to remove that piece, I don't know if it's.
It's, it hasn't reached the funding level, it really hasn't come up to us.
Yeah.
There are other priorities, as you know, the perpetual care fund covers two aspects, wages, um, undistributed part of the management budget. And there's just not enough funds, that's one of the reasons this year we requested, um, some money from the capital stabilization account to fund the dump truck. The logic was, didn't have enough money, they needed the truck, plus the truck is also used for snow and ice, so it's a proportional, um, expenditure. We've talked about it for years about trying to get the, uh, perpetual care fund increased.
Yeah.
Um, and there's just not enough money. And until someone comes to the conclusion, either allocate more funding, uh, we've had talks with the trustees and they just won't budge. So it's not a high funding priority, Michael.
Yeah, and again, I, I mean, I know that we, the fence work that we did along there, uh, you know, came out very nicely. I think it really complements the, that whole area there, even a lot of the tree work.
Leaves it open, it looks better aesthetically from across the street.
If there's that, um, that, that fence that's existing there, um, not to replace it.
Everybody else, put it on with the aqua funding.
Yeah, it just, it seems like, yeah, it seems like it wouldn't be something that would cost that much to do, I have no idea.
It's very expensive.
Jim Shaq did a presentation a couple of years ago on this and it was surprisingly expensive to take it down and just put in the wood.
When you take it down, you've got the whole length of, um, middle section.
I forget what the tree work was, but the tree work, just that area along, uh, the, the courts. Yeah. I think that was $70,000, just the tree work. Yeah, and again, I'm not talking tree work, I'm just saying removing the existing, whatever the cost of that is, that can't, I mean, the replacing of the, the fence we did with the wood is nice. That was expensive, but just the removal, it's just.
If they bring it forward in the next cycle, we'll evaluate it.
Yeah, okay. And why are the, why is the barbed wire fenced in? I know, this is the question I have, it's just, I, I, I look at that every day.
Goblins wanna escape, you know?
Yeah. If there's something we need to know about. So I just wanna be prepared.
Yeah.
Is, is this is the 10 miles west of Austin?
The zombie apocalypse.
You're already.
Yeah.
Proceeds all of us, I'm afraid.
Once you get in, you'll never get out.
Yes. Our Article 3 is a continuation of the replacing of lead necks and lead service lines. Um, we always get asked this, when's it gonna end? So to let you know, uh, we have 58 remaining known lines. There are 33 that we have to investigate that are possible, uh, lead service lines also, for a total of 91. Um, the reason we're asking for this much money is also we've managed to leave the tougher ones to the end. So these are longer, um, lines and more difficult, uh, lines to get at. Some of the early ones were very inexpensive for us, we got good prices on it. We're hoping to, we're hoping to kill it with this, um, but we've got possibly 91 to go. Everybody, it's, it's a good legitimate question and a good number to keep in the back of your head. If people go, when's it gonna end and how long is it going on? So this is $600,000, it's a, uh, uh, zero-cost loan, uh, from the MWRA and that's how we fund that. Number 4 is, uh, on, um, $150,000 to begin the engineering work to replace the pumping, the sewer pumping station on Woodside Road. Um, so this is just the engineering work to begin. Um, I'm not sure if it was exact, I don't think we failed, I think that we're having to increase service in that area, um, in order to provide adequate sewer pumping. Article 5 is the big one, South Reservoir Dam, $6 million, um, that's what we're proposing. I know that there is some ongoing work that, uh, where we're looking at getting some, uh, assistance from the federal government, although I guess it has to come through the state government ultimately, but that would be in the amounts of hundreds of thousands of dollars, not millions of dollars, but we'll take anything that we can get.
And it's reimbursement.
It's reimbursed. We have to do the work.
Yeah.
So we just did the North Reservoir Dam, right? And what's the timing for the South Reservoir?
So the South Reservoir Dam is, um, in poor condition, so we are under order from the Office of Safety to bring it into compliance. We received that order in, I think it was 2019, maybe?
It's been a while.
It's been a while.
So, uh, the, you know, we've, we've done all the design, we've finished the permitting and, um, we're ready to, to request the construction funding, so. It's a large project, um, it's unfortunate, but it is required at this point for us to move forward.
So, and I remember that, I remember actually getting the order, I'm just thinking, I'm going back to water rates, right? When we took the North Reservoir Dam off, we had to switch the MWRA, which cost us a lot, so now we have to do this again. For, for a similar length of ti- like similar duration of.
We're working with Weston Sampson to minimize the amount of downtime for the treatment plant. Um, and I don't know exactly that number off the top of my head, but that's something we can, um, put together. But that has been one of the design considerations that we've looked at because there is not just the cost of doing the work, right? There's the cost to the town for the water piece of it.
And I think for me, until I was here, sitting at this table, looking at water rates, I don't think I realized that replacing the North Reservoir Dam and all that work of come, you know, going offline, switching the MWRA to do the work and tying back, we're all, we're all paying for that now and it has a cost. We could probably quantify what that cost is. And if it's, you know, not, you know, South Reservoir has some failover, we can use the North, it won't be the same. North, it won't be the same MWR assessment. It'll be 30% of what we had to experience with NWR. I think that's, you're right, Beth, it's, it's 6 million to build it, but it's also water and potentially water sewer and for, you know, two or three years hence that we're gonna be absorbing that cost. So we should, the motion's the motion, but I think the, I think for town meeting, understanding the impact.
So water rates went 10%, is what we're saying?
I just didn't appreciate the impact of North, oh, it was a really dry summer, and so what happened? Oh, that was the summer we were doing the North Reservoir Dam, and everyone watered their lawn, but we weren't getting any water.
Good water.
Well, unfortunately, I think it'll probably be worse, and correct me if I'm wrong on this.
Roger, that's the wrong answer. I'm giving you the out, man.
But when, when, when we do the South, we are going to lose the water treatment plant. When we did the North...
Yeah, so I, I don't wanna misspeak, but it is, 'cause I don't know the details, but it's something that, and I haven't been at all the recent project meetings, but something we've talked about was minimizing that downtime to the treatment plant. When we did the, years ago, we did the low-level outlet at the South Reservoir Dam, and that the treatment plant had to be down for an extended period of time. We've done everything we can to minimize that downtime, knowing that, exactly what you said, there is a cost for the water. So I'm happy to go back and get the information and relay it to the board and to Capitol in case that question comes up at town meeting.
Okay. Article six. This is actually your, this is actually your article, but we're co-sponsoring it. This is the traffic projects around, around Lynch, 2.5 million in, in borrowing that will be paid by the capital stabilization fund from the override that occurred a few years ago. Article seven, I think we're all happy with this one. This is funding the strategic maintenance account. This has been a really good program for us. It's sort of lets us attack problems as they occur. It allows us to keep equipment rolling. Our goal is to keep things going for an extra three to five years. We've been able to attack projects that have immediate impact, like boilers in Ambrose that we've had to, to retube and things like that. So this has just been really a good program for us and very happy to see it moving from 100,000 to 200,000. And that's it.
All right. Any questions?
Okay, CPA plan, or lack of a plan, or wherever it stands, I actually don't know. As you are aware, Capital Planning Committee had three-time written the Select Board letters stating that we'd like to get involved early in the process, and that we have many questions that haven't been asked by us. I understand you're real close to drawing up a bylaw. My concern is, I don't wanna see this project go down based upon insufficient communication between committees and lack of communication. We're concerned that Capitol hasn't had any input. We're concerned that Capitol hasn't been on any of the original planning committee, organization committees, and we hope that Capitol will be at least a member of the CPA Committee, one of nine, I believe, Michael said. We feel it's crucial that we develop a working relationship with the CPA Committee and work collectively to make this town a better place. We haven't heard of the process, so if there is process, please notify us. My personal concern and Roger's concern, and we haven't taken a committee vote, but we're close to it, is the process. We feel that we've taken some assumptions in bringing this forward. First assumption is that along with the capital planning process, CPA will begin in the beginning of the fiscal year. Our hope is that the CPA and the Capital Planning Committee has a joint meeting with the proponents to listen to their projects in the first two weeks of July. So we both hear, both committees hear the same information. Once that information is given to both committees, I'm assuming the CPA Committee will go off, do their due diligence, look at these three project, these three requests. My understanding is it's housing, recreation, and...
Historic.
Historic buildings.
Yes, historic. They will come back with their, we're hoping they, and we're asking that they come back with their recommendation by the first week in August. For that reason, first week of August, it's still, the Capitol Committee can still consider some of the requests that weren't funded within the capital process of ranking. And that's where we stand. CPA will bring additional funds in the community if it's passed. I think we all have the obligation of putting forward the best product to the voters, be credible, answer all their questions, and be open and clear to people. Like I say, we haven't had any feedback from the board or the committee, so we ask that this happens before it gets to town meeting and it doesn't pass the first muster, which is town meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
Okay. The last issue, and we appreciate the time. Do you wanna start? You want me to start? On the FinCom's proposed article?
Do you wanna hear from us on this?
You can make it quick.
We'll make it quick.
Sure.
We've just become aware that it's going to be on the article that FinCom is going to request to joint sponsor with you a subcommittee to examine the purposes and uses of the building and capital stabilization fund. That's fine. It's been 18 years since we, you know, the town meeting commissioned a subcommittee to take a look at guidelines for the use of those funds. Good to take a look at it, but I think that the proper way to go about that would be to have a committee that is not exclusive to, first off, I don't think you wanna be evaluating repurposing the funds because that, as I understand it from your conversations with town council, could very well kill those funds if you attempted to repurpose them in some fashion. I think that if we were to look at that and, and go back and evaluate the, the recommendations of those prior town meeting subcommittees, what we would wanna do is, at a minimum, have the town management involved, since the town manager is the person that is ultimately responsible for all the town's capital planning issues. I think it would make sense for a representative member of FinCom, a representative member of the Select Board, representative member of capital planning, and then perhaps one, two, three, whatever, an appropriate number of people appointed by the town moderator, and make it a, a subcommittee of town meeting, and have that come back and report back to town meeting on any recommendations they may have on how we are, how we are utilizing those funds. Are we utilizing them appropriately? Is there something that should change? As you're well aware, when the 2006 report came out, they came back and said, the building stabilization fund, we're gonna define a minimum level of 200,000. You know, that number could easily go up. I don't know that we've seen a $200,000 building project in years. We did, I take that back. We had one. We had one to replace some part of the Ambrose sprinkler system that was only $75,000, and we did that out of the capital stabilization fund. But we don't do things on buildings for $200,000 anymore. That's just, you know, so, but I think that the way to go about that properly is not to say we're going to have FinCom define it in a small group. I think that it needs to be a comprehensive group, and I think, again, led by town management since ultimately the town manager is responsible for the capital plan.
Our feeling is that the 2006 report on the capital stabilization, but it's a very comprehensive, very well thought out, very well executed plan. We believe we've been falling into the T, but it's been 18, 20 years coming up, and that everything should be reevaluated. Specifically, I feel it should be town meeting with participation, what Roger said, and that this article that the FinCom is bringing, we believe it should be indefinitely postponed. And brought up to Article 28, at the end of town meeting, the former town meeting committee, working with the Select and possibly FinCom, would like to develop a charge and a description of the work required, and ask that that be done by the Fall Town Meeting. And if you could help us, we'd appreciate it.
Sounds good. Any other questions for Jimmy or Roger?
Could I ask a question? I understand through Michael, there's a preliminary draft bylaw coming down. Could we get it for next Wednesday so that the committee could discuss it and make some comments before it becomes the bylaw, proposed bylaw?
Is that this?
So that would be this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I sent you the draft that we discussed tonight, earlier today. We made some revisions to that a bit in the meeting this afternoon at 5:00. It does include a member, gee, one member of the Capital Planning Committee is designated by said committee, provided that said member is not also a member of the planning board.
You don't want her anymore, huh?
Yeah.
You could have run.
You haven't adjourned the meeting, you're still a member. So we, we do have addition of...
Thank you.
A member of capital planning as one of the nine members and a designated member. We also include consultation with municipal departments, specifically State Capital Planning Committee, and that's in the highlighted part on Chapter Two on the second page.
I've just got a, this is just so, been so frustrating, so frustrating. We have tried from the beginning to be a part of this process. We've been told CPA is a part of the process of fixing the capital problems that we have in this town. That's how it's being presented. That's how it's being sold. And yet, the people that are most intimately involved in the capital process in this town have not been included in the discussion. This is just, it just boggles the mind.
Well, we've got some time before town meeting, so hopefully everyone gets on the same page, and I think this is important for the town, and, you know, hopefully everyone gets on the same page and we're able to present a united front to get this passed.
Time is running out.
Yep.
And I understand you're gonna open the warrant out of it tonight, possibly?
I don't know what we're gonna do. We're gonna talk about it in about 30 seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for the reference.
Thank you, guys.
And I, I should say, I don't know if it was Beth or you all, but the, the old committees that were doing capital, like those reports from 2002, very helpful. So whoever dug them up, thank you.
Yes.
Just wanted to say that.
All right, Spring Town Meeting motions. So I guess, well, let's take up the CPA part first. So where, where are we at with this, guys?
So there are, you know, two parts to CPA, and the legis, the state legislation is fairly prescriptive, and there is not a lot to design kind of on your own freely. So we, you know, embarked on the process in setting up the study committee as defined by the state, and we represented on the committee the stakeholders that are identified by the state and required to be part of the process and that we felt were part of it. And so we've been doing that, and, you know, we, we kind of have been going back in the committee, back and forth between the, the process of doing the study and putting the articles before town meeting, and the process post-adoption, right? So the process post-adoption, if the community chooses to do so in the fall, that will be really how all of the parts work together, together, and the committee will set up their, their strategy for, for doing that. How, you know, requests are gonna be made, how they work with the town manager, the capital improvement program, the capital planning committee, and, you know, multiple other stakeholders, right? So it's, you know...
So I just, let me back up for a sec, sorry. So two weeks ago, we had the discussion, and we, it was a decision made by the CPA Working Group that we weren't gonna put a bylaw out there.
Yes.
Okay. And now I understand there's a draft bylaw, and we, is there, wanna reopen the warrant and include that now?
Yes, please.
So we've changed our position in two weeks.
We did, yeah.
So what led, I guess, what is, I guess, what, what information came to light in the last two weeks that won't lead you to wanna do this for us to reopen the warrant?
Well, what we actually voted, the study committee voted, was to present the governance piece as a draft to town meeting, so town meeting could see what we were doing, and we could work through the summer, going into the fall, to kind of formalize that a little bit, so, but there'd been a lot of feedback, especially in context of the elections and, and people deciding to weigh in, and they said, you know, we, we really want to support the CPA. It's such a great tool for our strategic capital plan and other neglected parts of the community, including affordable housing, and even we look at playgrounds and outdoor recreation, historical assets. But they felt like they wanted to see what the makeup of the committee was before they did it. So this was kind of a little bit new that this surfaced, and, and it really surfaced in the past few weeks, and people became very vocal about it. So we said, fine, we'll, we'll be responsive to what people's interests are, and we tried to very quickly put together the governance piece, which, as I mentioned, is fairly prescriptive from the state level. So, and it identifies the, at least the, the first five members of the, the committee, one being Conservation Commission, one the Historical Commission, one, we, we have identified Field Management Committee, one member of the Housing Authority, and one member of the Planning Board. So that's where things kind of start from there. When we looked at other communities, they, on the whole, will have Select Board make the, the balance of the other appointments. And so what we've been working on with the committee, and we worked on in the meeting today as well, is to include the Finance Committee, the Capital Planning Committee in at-large member, and we have the, the town manager as a, an ex officio member of the committee, because it's, including the town manager as a, a member of the committee, I don't wanna say it would, would waste a vote, but it's, it, it kinda can be a conflict of interest because it's like her voting to make a recommendation to herself based on capital planning. But having, and with the Affordable Housing Trust, we sometimes have this issue, right?
I abstain, yeah.
Beth abstains all the time. So you can only have a maximum of, of nine members. So we wanted to at least formalize with what town council kind of gave us the parameters for what to do. So we, we add the Capital Planning Committee, Finance Committee to the governance, and as Anthea said, the, the duties will include the, working with the Capital Planning Committee, Housing Partnership Board, Affordable Housing Trust, and Field Management Committee and Housing Authority. So we've kind of identified who the stakeholders are and who's gonna be in the room making the decisions. So now the, as I said before, the process of all how that gets done, gets done after, you know, it, it is done. And so it's voted in the fall election, so...
So when you say, what do you, I guess, describe that to me, when you say process?
So this is...
Yep.
This is, if you see this document where the, the highlights are, where, where the markup is, is, is the markup from a very standard document that says, you know, duties will coordinate with, will have one or more public hearings, will make rec, I'm not a lawyer, so, shall make recommendations to town meeting, you know, may include a recommendation to set aside funds, must set aside spending 10% in three buckets. It doesn't, when Mike said prescriptive, I shook my head because this is not prescriptive into the operations. It's prescriptive from the state in what it looks like, but it doesn't say the committee will, you know, meet on Thursdays with, you know, it, it doesn't specify then.
So that's what's gonna be, so you're gonna have, are you gonna have a draft of that for town meeting in the spring, or are you gonna wait till the fall?
So that, that's not, so this is like, this is the bylaw that's coming out. The, the operations of the committee would be...
Who forms that? The committee itself?
By the committee.
Yeah, this is more of like the enabling legislation for the CPA Committee to then start the process, and those will be the stakeholders who define their own process, which is going to have to be in line with the capital planning process. And we actually discussed this quite a bit, is that if it's along the summer... And we actually discussed this quite a bit, is that if it's along the summer trajectory that this is all happening, you know, that's a very busy time for capital, it's very meeting intensive, as John knows and as Jimmy and Roger know. So, you know, we, we want all the committees to designate their members that can really participate, but
So, is that how, I'm sorry, is that how it really works, that so the committee puts those operations in or does town meeting vote?
Committee does, yep.
So, it's like if we were to create a committee around, surrounding capital.
Say that again?
If we were to create a committee surrounding capital, separate committee, if we were to create a
So, I guess, what's the checks and balances that they're gonna work with capital? I mean, if the committee
Yeah, I don't get it.
I mean, I just don't understand, so what's to say that they're, you know, that this bylaw forms a committee, it charges them what to do and then they create their own rules on when they meet, how they decide things and what they do? What if the town doesn't like that? What if capital doesn't like that? What if town meeting doesn't like that? What's, I mean, what, I mean, what committee in this town gets to create their own rules like that, I guess, is my question? I mean, does capital, do you create your own rules like that? Isn't it done by?
But, like, the bylaws don't say that the select board meets on Mondays.
Right.
The, I mean, I think that the challenge is like the bylaw identifies the membership, it identifies the, like
But, I guess, my question is, does the bylaw need to go further to identify, you know, that they'll work in coordination with capital? I mean, I'm just throwing, I'm just throwing that one piece out because we
I mean, we did add that. We did add that, we just didn't
The highlighted draft.
We gave it away. We didn't, we say, like, the outcome, right? We don't say how the, we say what the product is, we don't say what the
So, do the working group look at what other towns and cities did with this and then gave us, like, here are four versions? Can we see that? Because I, I don't have any body of knowledge, like, I'm gonna vote no on this right now, just so you know, because I've got, I'm like with these guys right here, I know nothing, zero. You can look at me quizzically, but I don't know anything, Mike. So, I wanna talk to Jay to say, Jay, does this make sense? Because I don't really know, I'm just getting this at the last minute and I need to be fully informed, right now, I'm not informed.
So, is it the, the other, is it just the governance piece that, because we have the two, you know, we have the initial one that, that, you know, we brought last time, right? That was the initial CPA, the surcharge and all of that.
Which was like, yeah, that's like, we could've done it a year ago, it was simple, there's nothing to it.
Right, so that's the fir, that's the first part, so you support that?
I support the concept of it, yes.
Okay.
So, now, I'm now at the mechanics of it, like, how does it work? How does it, how do we work as a group together? You know, with capital, with FinCom?
Right.
With the Town Manager.
So, the, so when we looked at other communities, I mean, it's a fair question and I think that, you know, your anxiety about the process is what
It's not anxiety, I'm not anxious about it, I'm just uninformed and I've been sitting here, it's been an item on our agenda every other week that's received no action.
John, I, I don't think that that is true.
Of course it's true, go back and watch the videos, what are we, what have we got? We get this stuff, force this at the last minute and expect to make a decision.
John, we don't have to put this forward, but what we tried to do is respond to the committee, as I said last time we reported, there's two functions that we need to do. So, there's the governance piece, which we wanted to wait into the fall because we really wanted to spend some time having these conversations. We had a lot of pressure from people, you know, including Jimmy, telling everyone that, you know, it, we couldn't support the article without the government, governance piece, so we said
Jay's recommendation was, his recommendation was, and then you said that the subcommittee said, the working committee said, we don't wanna have a bylaw. And his was, hey, do the bylaw at the same time. So, my point is, we could've done it a month ago, that's all I'm saying, Mike.
I, I understand, John, but we thought we were waiting and the reason that we thought that we were waiting is because we wanted to really spend some time and engage with people on this process. To be honest with you, when
So, why are we staying that, I'm just curious, I get your point, that you've gotten feedback in the last two weeks during the election cycle that, you know, people aren't gonna support this without seeing it. I get that, but why, if it was the recommendation two weeks ago to stay the course and do it that way, why, why are we flipping now? What, is, is, is the public outcry that great? Because I haven't heard anything personally.
It, it is, it is, and I think that we wanted to be responsive to the, to the concerns and what the CPA, the CPA working group, what everybody agreed on was that we didn't wanna go into town meeting with nothing. So, we were gonna work on a draft and bring that to town meeting, not an article. So, so that's, so we wanted to be, you know, at the goal line at town meeting and say, you know, give people this and say, we've talked to a lot of people, we think this is the best process. So, I think that's what we, we intended and now people, I think, are saying, we don't want just a draft, we want something formal.
So, would this be in the motion? So, we can't really, we need to be, so if we, so, what, so, tell me the mechanics of it, so we reopen the, we reopen the warrant?
Right, you reopen the warrant, the article is, so, I can't remember if I sent this out or if I had it at the table, this was the first version, it has the article that says the town will vote to amend its general bylaws by adding a new chapter twenty-five entitled Committee Preservation Committee as follows. And then, it's the, it's the language of the bylaw. The motion is, because you have to vote both the article and the motion. Tonight, you vote to reopen the warrant, to place the article and the motion is just to approve the article as written now.
So, this would be an additional article we're adding to town?
This would be a new article that the board will be sponsoring at town meeting.
And
And then, so, after, we met at, we met at five o'clock tonight with the, with the working group, they made some edits, so that's the
So, I guess, my concern is, so once we add this as an article and let's say, you know, you go back now and Jimmy's got a copy, whoever's got a copy and they're like, we want you to add this, this and this, we, you know, we'd have to amend it at the floor, you would have to amend it at the floor of town meeting.
Or we have a
Yeah.
Or reopen it to amend it, right?
I think that that's what we wanted to try to avoid and spend some more time, is that kind of gamesmanship that goes on, I'm not gonna vote for it if it doesn't include this, right? And so, we've heard from the, from other communities that that is what happens, you know, if there's too long of a runway with it, right? So, when we actually looked at the, the sample bylaw, it actually is a lot simpler than I think you otherwise might have thought. So, the, the, what most people have anxiety about is how, how is this process going to work? How is this committee gonna work together? And part of it is just its trust in local government. This, this happens in two hundred other communities in the Commonwealth.
Mike, I could just tell you, that doesn't work for, that didn't work for, I mean, you know, the last town meeting, I stood up there and I got hammered for a good solid hour about, you know, and it just, you know, you could just sense the lack of trust. So, I, I mean, I agree with you, but I just don't, I don't sense it, so.
And one of the things that we talked about, so this was always going to be our process, right?
Yeah.
Is, and we are meeting again with the committee to finalize the study report and then we will start engaging with all of the stakeholders, the Town Meeting Member Association and, and really rolling this out full-time. So, but this
So, Mike, I think that was my thing, as much as anything, is that had you articulated it at the outset, here was what it looks like going forward. So, whether it's Jimmy and Roger, they have a question like, well, when do we get involved? They can say, well, this is the point in time. Now, they may not, they may not necessarily love where they're getting involved or FinCom or whoever that is, but now, we're just finding out how the rest of this plays out. That's all, that's all I'm trying to
No, I get it.
And they can't get involved because it's an article, you have to amend it at town meeting. So, you really can't, you're saying, we want you to be involved, we want you to be involved, you know, going forward, but really, you know, whatever feedback you get, it could be great, it could be bad, you can't make any amendments unless you go to the floor of town meeting for the bylaw.
This, I'm sorry, Anthea, go ahead.
I mean, you could, I mean, but if you had a draft of it
Yeah.
You could, you know, get that feedback and you could say to town meeting, look, this is what we've done in the last month, we rolled out the draft, we went to capital planning, we went to FinCom, we went wherever and this is the feedback we got and this is what the draft, the consensus of the group is and this is what we would be, you know, presenting at, I think it was fall town meeting, was that the plan? When were you gonna present the bylaw, after it passed?
We were gonna present a draft of the bylaw and then have the article of the bylaw in the fall.
In the fall.
So, I, I think the challenge is, like, this bylaw feels very light, right? I mean, I think everyone kind of agrees, like, this bylaw doesn't tell us what to do, it doesn't tell us how to do it, it doesn't, it says who's there. This bylaw is longer than any of the bylaws in our town bylaws for standing committees on composition duties, vacancies. I mean, what, what, the thing to think about is when we have a bylaw about a committee, it's who's appointed, how long they're there, that they present a report to town meeting, that it's distributed via email and mailing, that if there's a vacancy, it gets filled. And so, I think the challenge is, like, the, what the bylaw does is not how any, it does not describe how any of the committees in our current bylaws do their work and plan their work outside of things like specific to timelines of the town manager's budget. So, I think that's where there's, there's a challenge too and as we look at the bylaw, it's, it's incredibly similar to the bylaw you will see in all of the two hundred and some other towns that have
So, so, why two weeks ago were we just not planning to roll it out then if it's that straightforward and simple? I just don't, I guess, that's where I'm, I'm guessing, I'm, that, I feel like it's, you know, time, the clock has run out and now we're gonna, you know, reopen things and I just don't understand why. If it was, if it was so straightforward and so simplistic and like we were saying, Anthea, I just don't understand why we just, what was the opposition doing it two weeks ago?
Well, I, I think, you know, as I, as I said, I mean, I, I think that there's been a lot more discussion about it lately. I mean, we, we raised this and we, we did a, you know, initial discussion of this at, at fall town meeting to really get people talking about it. And what we heard is, by and large, everybody supported the CPA in concept. And so, we thought that the, really looking at the, the surcharge and the mechanics of it and what, identifying what the needs were, putting the study report, we, we saw that as the priority as they have done in other communities and really, really have just been following along. You know, you look also, you know, the schools, you know, aren't, you know, a member of the, the working group and they're not, they're not in here either, right? So, they're not saying, we're not gonna have any say about future capital projects. I mean, chances are a lot of it probably will be schools. But, I think it's, you know, really, this second piece of it turned out, I think, when we, like, we worked on it very hard over a short period of time, I think it turned out to be a lot simpler than we thought. And Town Council, when we started adding things to be, you know, a lot more specific, he just said, you can't do that and cut out everything. And so, this, I think that this, what we have this draft here and Jay was there today going over this draft as he has for the past couple of weeks, is a really good reflection of what other communities are doing, but also in a way that makes it very tailored to Winchester, so.
So, Jay's reviewed this draft, the current?
Yeah, yeah.
But, he has not reviewed the few tweaks that we made this afternoon because he left the call early. So, I think some of the things we added, but then there was another item that I had some technical difficulties that it wasn't there for, so that needs to be incorporated into this.
What I remember from two weeks ago was, we were going to, CPA committee was gonna present a bylaw that was going to be in substantial form, like what we thought we would bring to fall town meeting. That's what I recall from two weeks ago, so this might be in substantial form and it's the membership. And what, and, and the big picture, what we're asking town meeting to vote on is to put it on a ballot for voters in November. So, if this establishes membership and appointment authority, kind of consistent with other bylaws, and then governance is what gets defined, how the bodies interact, how potentially, how things are assessed or, you know, scored or needs are assessed. You've got time after spring town meeting to present that to the voters that they agree that these two groups will play well together in the sandbox. So, the vote of town meeting is to put it on the ballot, it's not to commit the town to the CPA, the voters do that. So, I don't have a problem with a membership bylaw that we think reflects the, the committees as they're named in Winchester, it reflects the form that we think it might take, our attorneys looked at it. So, I don't have a reason not to support this tonight. I'm not sure I wanna, I'm not sure I would encourage Anthea and Mike to get into, you know, wordsmithing before spring town meeting. This is, we think this is the membership, the rules you'll see later.
But, is that what, so, my ignorance, but I'm just trying to figure out, is that what the voters vote on or they just vote on the surcharge? See, so we don't have, even have that much information?
Fair enough, I don't know that I know that answer either.
So, is this, so does this, I mean, or is this all back, like, I would say, background, you know, to support, what is the vote in the fall?
The vote in the fall is the article to put, so the vote in the fall is the first article to put CPA on the ballot at the surcharge and with the, the three exemptions. So, that, that's what the vote will be. The bylaws are sort of like what we established, they need to be approved by the Attorney General of the state and then allow us to move forward. So, this is what Jay had kind of, Jay had presented this earlier, is that we do the bylaws in November, it needs to be approved by, it, it sort of creates a longer
They got ninety days to approve, right?
Timeline, yeah. I think when we looked at it previously, we thought
So, the voters aren't approving the bylaws, the voters are approving the concept of the CPA?
Yes.
And then, all that other governance stuff goes packaged up to the AG's office and they approve that. So, town meeting, by approving the article, actually approves the bylaw.
So, town meeting approves the first article that you guys put on the warrant last week, right?
Right.
So, this
And the discussion tonight is whether you wanna add a second article
With a bylaw.
With a bylaw.
But, to Mel Schell's point, this second article doesn't go to the voters of the bylaws, they don't get a say in this.
No.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Again, forgive my ignorance, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out the process.
To your point, that wasn't just gonna be for discussion purposes and not for vote?
That was my understanding two weeks ago.
So, it was gonna, it was gonna be a draft for discussion and then a vote in the fall.
So, now, they want to reopen the warrant and put another article on to say, you know, they wanna do the fall's work now, say, this is the bylaw.
Is there a reason to do that? Is there, to do that now?
Yes.
He said the feedback for the two, the last two weeks, the feedback they received is that people, in order to support this, they wanna see, they wanna vote on the draft article. They don't wanna see a draft, they wanna see the actual bylaw.
I've heard that feedback.
Yeah.
I'm not part of this committee, but I've heard that, so, I, I agree, I didn't know that we were gonna have it tonight, so, but here we are.
And I think part of it is from stakeholders to say, we wanna know that you're committing and you're going to town meeting and you're saying this and we're voting on it, that we're gonna be on this committee. Not, because a lot of other communities, when you look at it, it's not broadly representative across stakeholder groups, it is appointments by select board, right? So, in a way, you know, we are kind of ceding some of our ability to influence this committee to other stakeholder groups. So, I, you know, that's, that is one of the things that maybe this select board isn't as excited about, I don't know.
So, let me ask you this, so, so town meeting approves, let's say, just the article we have, that automatically goes to the voters in the fall, the next election, right? If the bylaw fails, in the meantime, you work on the bylaws, you work on the governance, if that fails at town meeting, it's still voted on in the fall election? So, you can take your time in getting the bylaws right?
You can bring that piece back, sure.
Yeah.
I just don't see what the rush is, I mean, I, that's just, I mean, I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
I get what you're saying.
They're gonna vote no, if they don't see what we're committing ourselves to at spring town meeting, then they're gonna vote no on putting it to the voters, right? Because it, and I think that there, one of, some of the anxiety about it is that it, there's gonna be this kind of rogue committee that's gonna spend all their money on crazy stuff, I mean, that is what I've heard.
So, I mean, something had to happen, like someone
But, none of that changes this.
Firing people up over this, because what, it just seems strange that in two weeks, all of a sudden, people need to see this.
There's been a lot more attention to it from the election cycle, I don't know what to say.
Okay, that's fine, all right.
That's, that's what it is and so
We had people who were attending, attending the meetings that we had of the CPA.
Yeah, I mean, it just, it just doesn't feel good to have this on the agenda for so long and here we are with the warrant closed, now we're asked to reopen it and put an article on after two weeks ago, we said, you know, we said, no, we didn't, we weren't gonna do it that way. I just, I mean, I, I guess, I'm not as close to this as you two are.
We're, we're just really trying to be responsive, I mean, to the concerns of residents and, and stakeholders. So, as we, we, we're really just trying to show good faith here. But, the, the committee was concerned, you know, that we weren't, that we wouldn't propose any draft to town meeting. So, the committee always felt like we should be showing something to town meeting and now, I think, we're just formalizing the process a little bit more, which will, you know, really, really help post adoption for, for things to work out. And certainly, you know, as Jimmy has said and we talked about this, coordinating the committee to be in the same timeline as the capital process and to be meeting jointly, that all sounds good, that sounds like good government to me. I just can't, there's no vehicle for us to vote on that, that piece of it at this point. So, that's, even no matter how many hours that we spend. So, these are the vehicles that the state legislation allows us to put in place and anytime we got to be a little bit more specific about things, Town Council said no.
So, just as, it's probably, go in the bylaw So um, just as, it, it's probably go in the bylaw, but how do you keep, since everybody's term is three years? You don't want them all wash out in three years. So how do you, what do you do? Do you have to put that in the bylaw or not? That X member's on for one year, three are on for two years, three are on for three years, you know, three for one, three, and so then it all cycles.
Oh, my God. Um, do we not, we don't have at the very end of that. I think part of it is that.
I think it will naturally stagger because every member who's appointed from a various border committee may not have three years left on their. Term, if that makes sense, when you start.
But when you start, you have to. Three years, cause otherwise everybody's.
Maybe the con con member who's appointed could have a year left on their term as a con con member, right?
It could. That's two or so, if that happens.
There's one citizen at large.
So there is. Two.
It's just a question that.
It's a fair question.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that is a question. I mean, it.
I just don't remember if it has a bylaws, I only, maybe it doesn't. But I've seen other places where it's.
One from the finance committee. Versus the others are, you know, have some potential likelihood to, to turn over within those um terms, but. I think that's a fair.
It's ten thirty.
So I guess. We have to, you have to vote on the warrant April first, a week from tonight. We have to have a final warrant. That is gonna go to the printer first thing on Tuesday morning.
Yeah, we won't have it done.
So if there are things, and I think certainly legal counsel needs to review this. Uh, again, based on some of the changes that were made tonight, some of the comments we, we heard. So the board can vote this, subject to. Some portion of you working with me and Town Council to finalize before the warrant goes to the printer. Or we can meet again on Friday to review. A bylaw, but, but there's some more, this, what you have before you tonight is, I can't say that there aren't gonna be some changes, right?
Not substantive. I mean, I think a lot of it is just gonna be small tweaks. And this is what was approved, you know, um, this evening. Um, by the working group and made the recommendation to, to us. And so, and we told them that Town Council may tinker with it a little bit, but um. This is, you know, both these um. These, these articles are gonna move forward in substantially the form that they're presented in. And Thea and I am sure can work on. You know, kind of those tweaks and, and getting it um, getting it to the board for, for review as soon as possible. Um, so, and you know, we can answer things like, you know, your question about the um. The terms of the board members not, you know, all terminating at the same time. So, um, and, and anything else. But this is um, we've been working for, I don't know, week. Week, two weeks, I don't know, on, it all blends together with that. But with Town Council on this, and this was the, this was what was recommended. And we've been making a lot of changes to it. To um, to, to get feedback. And you know, these, these meetings have included, you know, department heads and stakeholders and, you know. As well, as well, yes. And so um, because if they're, uh, you know, Stacy's been a part of it, you know, Nick, you know, from the RAG. So there's um, been, been a lot of input in this, this draft specifically.
You met with Nick about the draft bylaws?
Yes, he was there at the meeting today. He's always at the meetings. I mean, the meetings are, I mean, the other thing is.
They're part of the working group.
The, well, no, I mean, the, the working group is, is who we invited. And then there are, we also re- related department heads. They come if they want to, right? So um, these are open meetings. They are, um, all of our materials are online. They're um, they're posted, they're Zoom meetings, so they're easy to get into. And we actually do have a lot of people that attend. Um, that are not part of the group. And some of those people are the people giving us feedback.
Is there a motion that we want to make?
I will make a motion to reopen the Spring two, twenty twenty four Town Meeting warrant and make the following change. Add a new article to the Community Preservation Committee bylaw pursuant to MGL forty four B to the warrant and then close the twenty, Spring twenty twenty four Town Meeting warrant.
So can we add something?
Subject to.
Subject to.
Town council.
Review the Town Council with some subset of the board involved in that to finalize it, so that we can have something final to put in the warrant for Monday.
Yes, uh, subject to review with Town Council and uh, finalization of a draft. Of a, of a document for the Monday warrant.
Is that sufficient at that measure?
Yeah, I mean, as long as the board is fine with, I don't know, I would say myself, Mike and Anthea. Working out this language between now and Monday night.
So what items will it work out?
The form that's here, like, we're not gonna change the membership of the committee.
So the conversation was like, on a member of capital that's not also a member of planning. Do we need to articulate in a specific way how we say somebody who. Is on one border and not another. Like, some of it was just the nuanced language.
There's not an overlap between a border committee member that starts on.
So it's just some technical language.
If we bring this in and we ask for approval, we'll show it to Town Meeting, and then we, over the summer, say, you know. We should revise a couple of these items. We can bring it back, right?
Yeah.
And revise it. Just in case we learned something, we're like, okay, this doesn't, this, we've had a chance to live with this and it doesn't make sense.
Absolutely. A hundred percent.
I think that would be, then I feel more comfortable if we agree that, that we live and learn. I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, and that's why we um, we thought that that's what was gonna be happening over the summer, to be honest with you, post, you know, recommendation to the voters, right? Um, but um, I, I get it, you know, we've been working closely on it, we um, for a while, and um, this has been coming down the pipeline for a while. But people um, they, they wanna, they wanna know what they're buying when they put it out to the ballot, because, you know, there's a sense for people that um. That maybe the voters will just approve it and not really pay attention, because it all sounds good without, without knowing, you know, um, what's under the hood. So um, we said fair, um, this is what's under the hood. And um, it's the, you know, vehicle that's gonna get us where we need to go um, post November.
So just one small tweak. Another small tweak. The Community Preservation Act Committee instead of the Community Preservation Committee, so we don't have two CPC.
Well, we, we were gonna work on that. I wasn't comfortable calling CPAC either.
Whatever we come up with.
Whatever the acronym is.
You just might need to keep it local.
Right, yes.
You could, you could be okay.
We'll, we'll see.
We have till about five o'clock on Monday.
Yes.
There is a motion and a second.
There's a standing.
All right, so, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you. I, I appreciate you guys working with us on this.
Spring Town Meeting motions.
What's left?
Our actual real.
Emotions.
That we've been talking about for a couple of meetings now. Any changes or anything to any of them?
Yeah, so I just wanted to mention on, so article, what's labeled as two here reflects the discussion at your last meeting. Terms of the water sewer rates with the increase of the service charge to thirty five dollars per billing period. Um, CPA reflects the one point five percent sur- surcharge and then the um exemptions that we agreed to. Um, what's shown here is article or labeled as five. So um, I did slightly adjust the um amount to be transferred from free cash based on some feedback we got from um Chris Nixon. We originally had three hundred and forty thousand, but we are double counting the hundred thousand that we already gave to the engineering. So that number is reduced to two forty. So uh, we have one point three million coming out of ARPA. Um, nine hundred and sixty thousand coming from the overlay surplus and then the two forty coming from free cash. And I think that's. That's it. The strategic maintenance, as Roger mentioned, is up to two hundred thousand.
Can I, uh, I should actually hold this since Bob has left, but uh, last time when we talked about water and sewer. And the increase to the service charge, just asked how that reflected um multi units buildings. I don't know if there's an answer to that yet.
I don't think there's an answer yet. They're gonna look into that. Right now, we don't have a difference. So.
Right.
It's got something that we're gonna have to look into.
And on the gym floor, were there any donations that anyone wanted to make towards?
Still working on those. So I think the plan is to go forward with the motion.
That as a placeholder?
Yeah, and then if donations come in, which just means we have to use less.
Just reduce it, yeah, okay. That was my only question on that.
So is everyone comfortable with our motions?
Yes.
Any changes? Can we get a motion to approve our motions?
Motion to approve the spring, Spring Town Meeting. Motions.
As presented in the packet.
It's substantial.
It's substantial, the form presented in the packet for March twenty fifth.
Second.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed? That passes. All right, that comes to the Committee to Study Capital Funding. This is what we talked about last time with Dr. Miller here. Forming this committee. Uh, you saw that they have an article, it was the same article they had on before. You heard from Jimmy and Roger about that.
I'm confused. Are we being asked to co-sponsor that or they're going forward with that regardless? Okay, that's what I thought.
I think John, the last meeting, he asked you to co-sponsor and the board was interested, so they've gone for it.
So it's going in anyway.
And we talked about at the last meeting about forming this committee.
Yes.
Uh, in response to that, and you heard from Jimmy and Roger tonight that they're talking about article under article twenty eight. Having either Town Meeting, which has done it historically in two thousand two and two thousand six, where the town manager, because of the charter. Says the capital falls into the town manager, actually leading that committee, because I think um, there's some concern with, you know, FinCom. Taking the lead on, on this committee. So it's just, historically, it's been done different ways in this town. So um, so you're gonna have either competing articles at Town Meeting. And then we've also said that we were gonna start this process, you know, go to, show to Town Meeting that we were, you know, forming this committee. So. Beth, what, did I, is that all options?
There's three options, right? The FinCom article, the board to create your own co- committee outside of Town Meeting. Or as Jimmy mentioned, to add, um, create a new committee, which I think is probably happens on in two thousand two and two thousand six. To create a Town Meeting many, Town Meeting Committee to study the capital planning process. I, I think either the boards, um, you know, creating your own committee or the Town Meeting Committee is a little bit more of an inclusive. Process rather than having it led by the finance committee in, in their article. They say the finance committee in consultation and cooperation with the select board. So there aren't any other parties mentioned in their article.
Yep.
Um, and I think there's an opportunity to have this be a much more robust collaborative effort um, with a variety of stakeholders.
And not to punt, but to punt, we can, we could see if there's a motion, because I think when we had John Miller here, we talked about having, you know, what it was. Their article or ours, you know, EFPPC and other members, if, do we have the motion language yet for this article?
From who?
From FinCom?
Yes.
Or is it just, it's just that paragraph?
Yeah, just the article that.
So if the motion somehow had more people, we could, we could choose to wait to vote on that until we see the motions. Like, we don't have to vote on that.
Motion can't be more expansive than the article. They can be more restrictive.
But it sounds like capital planning is gonna start working on, you know, presenting an alternative to Town Meeting. So I don't know if this board wanted to signal to stakeholders out there that this is our preferred method, is to be more inclusive and do it through Town Meeting. That's what Beth said.
I, I think we just need to call, come up with one, you know.
Right.
Way to, way to move, whether, you know, I'd say that we want this one or that one, because we don't know what they are yet, so.
We know FinCom's.
We could always.
I know, I understand.
We know.
You heard what capital planning is gonna propose.
Because we could just do our own.
Let's have three.
You can't put an article, I mean, you can do your own motion.
That's right. We could signal to Town Meeting that we plan to. That we plan to have our own.
Um, so, so, I mean, the two thousand six was a committee of Town Meeting members.
Right, so the, the historical pattern in two thousand two and two thousand six was that they were town, town um, meeting committees.
Is there a reason why this shouldn't be again?
No, I mean, if, if I, if you had to ask me without having any of this background, I would say that it would make sense for it to be a Town Meeting. Committee, right? Just based on the historical, you know, way in which it's been done. I think it makes sense to do it that way.
What do you think, Reg?
I think it should be Town Meeting Committee.
Anthea?
I, I agree, I think.
I'm not sure.
Following a similar.
What's your reservation?
It's the town manager's capital plan. The town manager reports to the select board. The select board gives guidance on the town manager's budget. Town Meeting votes on all of the outputs of all that. So I, I see value in the select board and the town manager running the committee. That's, that's just knee jerk. That's my reservation. I feel like some Town Meeting members, though, there's plenty that are, that have served on capital, that have served on FinCom that know the process. I think some of the people that, John, you and I were meeting with, when we had Mark, Beth, FinCom, Schools. Jim and Roger, looking at the fall override, I feel like these, these people are closest to it. And they may not all be Town Meeting members, and they may not. Be as informed as the group that we had back in November, looking at an override.
The other thing to consider is, you know, we've talked about this, is, you know, you can't really look at this capital problem in a vacuum.
Exactly.
Given our point in time at this time. You know, you've heard Beth talk about the pressures on the operations side of things. So I think holistically. Whatever you guys do decide going forward, needs to be holistic.
Yeah.
You at this point. So what, if that's a select board, just, you all have to be prepared to present some alternative at Town Meeting. Cause it's, the only thing that's gonna be out there is FinCom's.
Potentially competing articles, yeah.
Right.
Yep. And I'm not saying that, that is what the board's gonna do, I'm just saying that's my only hesitation in this moment, is throwing it to Town Meeting.
So whoever's, to Mike's point, whoever's looking at this, it needs to be, you know, a collaborative group effort. And whether it's the State of the Town Committee, whether it's, you know, Town Manager led, whether it's Town Meeting, whether it's FinCom. You know, I think out of those choices, I think having just FinCom take the lead is something unorthodox and has not been done in this town for these types of big issues like this. I'm not saying they're not at the table, but I think, you know, if it's Town Manager or Town Meeting, you're looking at something that's probably more inclusive um, in the process. So, and probably by charter and.
Yeah.
How we've done things historically. So you just need to be prepared to deal with it. You heard Jimmy and Roger tonight, they're gonna put, you said you're meeting Wednesday? Did I hear you say that?
Yeah, scheduled.
And you're gonna put together some motion?
We're going to recommend to the committee that we put together a motion under article twenty eight.
No article numbers yet, but under that, it's a standard article. So whatever article number it ends up being.
Is that's the.
So why would you want that? Because FinCom's doing it or because you think you actually wanna revisit the way you do your job?
No, I mean, they, they brought a point, which is, we haven't revisited this um, for eighteen years now. And as I said, some of it is a bit dated, you know, the two hundred thousand dollar limit. So it makes sense, we've got a good basis document to go back in. Look at, over the course of eighteen years, have things changed substantially other than just sort of baseline numbers? And to come back and, 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 but I don't believe that it makes sense for us to proceed with FinCom leading this. By themselves and, you know. It, it needs to be a broader base, particularly since, I'm, I'm sorry, but.
Yeah, I mean, by, by charter, right? It's not the finance committee who leads the capital planning process.
To your point, Michelle, if you're gonna. That runs the capital process either.
Right, but I think, I think the reason that it was done in the early two thousands was that it helped Town Meeting. Who then votes on those articles, put some bounds around what they expected to come to them.
But to your point, Michelle, is if it's, if you're looking at it more holistically and you're talking about operations side, then maybe it's a Town Manager, select board led effort. You know, State of the Town Committee, I don't know. But I'm just, you're gonna have to deal with it.
I think either option B or C is a, is a more inclusive process than the finance committee article has presented.
And if that's the way this board is tarynding, and some other committees are doing the same thing, maybe it's approach FinCom about this option. Rather than the fight at the floor of Town Meeting.
Of course.
So what is the, the timing of that? The articles are printed on Tuesday morning.
Yeah, I mean, they can always vote and definitely put upon, right? Up to the second they get to the floor.
But my only point is between now and April twenty ninth, you guys need to have those conversations.
Yep.
It's, it's.
And you know, we created the State of the Town Committee, which was extremely effective, and that wasn't a warrant article, you know.
Right.
So, I mean, I think if we all agree that we need to, you know, evaluate the process, then it's just the stakeholders.
Right now, FinCom wants to take the lead on that, so.
Yeah.
And historically, it hasn't been done that way.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that's gonna go well. So I mean, it's, um, I, I think that it's, you know, we need to, to lead the, a, a process. That certainly involves, FinCom certainly involves capital planning. FinCom certainly involves capital planning, and go from there, but it, it, I don't think it needs to be a warrant.
Right, so that's what we talked about in our last meeting, so that's why we put on the agenda today to kind of further that along. I would suspect you're going to have that discussions, there are going to be ongoing discussions, so I didn't know.
I, I would just hope that whoever is talking to FinCom or John or whatever, that, you know, we send the message that we all want to address this, and it, and it it looks bad if everybody's going in different directions on this to solve the same problem, so.
Sure does.
Right?
Yep.
So, and it's the last thing I think that, you know, we all need right now is.
So, John and Michelle, you've had the most contact with John and, you know, and, and, you know, based to just on your role in the capital side of things, so I don't know.
We will close the loop with them tomorrow.
Okay.
Are you meeting with them tomorrow?
No, but we can just.
Okay.
That's the current thinking.
You just want to get out of here.
So.
No, 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 but we'll, we'll let them know the current thinking. Like, one of us talks to John, one of us talks to Jeff, that's generally how we do business, and we'll give them an update. As to undecided, but this is the way we might be leaning, but the board hasn't taken a vote, so.
So in, in terms of if we haven't taken a vote, I, I think we're voting motions on, or we're voting the, sorry, we're voting the warrant on having.
After Monday, there's no additional articles.
You don't need to change anything for articles. You can just make a motion under the article at town meeting. If you want to form the town committee, town, go ahead.
But we, but we are just, we are just essentially approving the warrant.
Yes.
On Monday, so we don't need to necessarily come to consensus on this.
Correct.
By Monday, but we need to do that by.
The first night of town meeting.
Want to go into town meeting with a plan.
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we should have that, you know, set within two weeks, both in, like, if the FinCom article is going to be on there, if capital's putting an article in, in that last article.
So the motions are due to the town manager's office April first. But you can make a motion, you know, anybody can make a motion closer to town meeting, you just have to give, do notice to town meeting.
Right.
But the motion book, which gets mailed out to town meeting members, those motions are due to our office April first.
And then we will vote, do we vote that, or?
You voted your motions tonight. The motion book itself does not, the board doesn't vote as a whole, no. But I do think, whether you do your own article or we do.
We're not doing our own article.
Sorry, whether you do your own committee outside of town meeting, or we, or it's a sponsored article under that, you know, second to last article, whatever, town meeting is going to need an update, right? Because there's going to be a lot of, there was a lot of discussion last fall, and then this article, even if they definitely postponed it, they can still speak to it.
Yes.
Is going to generate a lot of discussion. So we are going to have to plan going forward how we continue this dialogue with town meeting. Even if the board has its own.
And to Mike's point, it's, you know, if we can get united front with everybody, you know, that's the way you want to do it.
Yeah, I, I think that, that would be the, the thing, is like, we need to just figure out what's the proposed and moving forward approach. I think there's benefits to both sides. If we, you know, follow something very similar to what was done in two thousand six, then it really puts it back to town meeting as the stakeholders. If we, you know, have it stem from the town manager and the select board, you know, is there noise about who and how people are appointed to that?
Yeah.
Which, kind of, there's certainly a benefit to having that be.
I'll leave that for you guys to figure out on a different date.
Thanks.
All right. So we don't need to vote anything today, right? Upper discussion, is there anything?
Um, so a couple of things. First, we, we had received a two hundred thousand dollar state earmark to go towards recreation purposes. Unfortunately, we were formed, maybe late last year, early this year, that that earmark had been cut in half to ten, to a hundred thousand. We had planned.
Taxes.
We had planned to use that money to completely redo the tennis courts at Leonard Field, which are in very poor condition, and it's been on the field management committee's list of something to do. It's, the price of the project has not been cut in half, so if the board would be so willing, and you can, if you want to vote tonight, I'm happy to have it come back to the next meeting, but to, to consider allocating a hundred thousand dollars of ARPA funding towards that to make up the difference. This earmark money has to be spent by June thirtieth of this year, which is a problem. So we don't really have any other way.
Yeah, let's do it.
Do we have a contractor for the job?
We don't. We're finalizing the documents right now.
I'll make a motion.
We can't, we can't fit it if we don't have funding secured.
Quick question. My understanding is that the high school has been practicing there. The tennis team.
They probably have, because they can't use the Winchester Swim Tennis Club.
So I, I see in, in, in your memo, Beth, that.
No choices.
So, I'm sorry, so they practice there until May, till the Packer Ellis courts opens May first.
Okay.
So they usually, they usually use the swim te, the swim and tennis club courts until that date. And then they switch over to Packer Ellis, but because Swim and Tennis Club is not available, they're scrounging around different areas.
Okay, I was just making sure that this wasn't because of the flooding at Packer Ellis, that was, okay, cool.
I'd like to go back to the tennis club.
For tournaments, because they can't play on play courts.
That's right.
Make a motion that we allocate a hundred thousand dollars from ARPA money for the Leonard Court, Leonard Tennis Court project. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
Good day.
Good day, guys.
Um, the, we're closing out the town hall library window evaluation, so we have just over ten thousand dollars to need to rescind.
A motion to rescind ten thousand three hundred seventy nine dollars and ninety cents from the town hall and library window evaluation for ARPA funds.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Anything else under ARPA?
Nope.
I have a question. Beth, how soon are we going to have options for Mystic?
So we met with them last, was it last week, week before, and they're working with Pete to put, get their hands around what that scope will look like for a preliminary analysis. It's, it's not an easy evaluation to do, so. I'll push on them to get it as soon as possible, but.
Right, because they might be designing a Cadillac, and we're going to.
No, you made it clear the other day that.
A Yugo?
We're definitely.
You have the economy model.
Ford Fiesta range.
Yeah, because that's my concern, is that we designed this, you know, beautiful QE two, and we're like, no, no, we're going to use Chris Craft.
No, that was.
In Boston Whala.
It was very much, it was very much made clear that that's not where we're headed at this point, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Right, we good on ARPA?
Yep.
All right, Morocco Culvert MBTA license agreement, so everyone's had a chance to review that. Any questions on that?
They voted it.
We voted it?
In executive.
That's right, we did.
Yeah.
It seemed like hours ago.
Yep. It was.
So we're good there, never mind.
That's right.
All right, so that leaves us with a comptroller contract, so, or comptroller Stacy Ward's contract's up at the end of the month. We've been engaged in negotiations with her. I'm happy to report that there was a contract that seems everyone's in agreement with. Board reviewed it, town council's reviewed it. It's in the packet, and so we just need to adopt that in order to move forward with that. Other questions or discussion further about it? Great.
Thank you for doing that and to talk with Stacy.
Yes, great job.
Thanks to Stacy.
Yes.
Glad she's sticking around.
Thank you for being a point to her.
A motion to approve the employment agreement between the town of Winchester, Massachusetts, and Stacy Ward CPA CGA.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes. That just leaves the consent agenda, right?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as posted for Monday, March twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Thank you, Rich.
Thanks, Rich.
Good to have you, Rich.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, WinCam. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
No.